And?
Good morning. This invocation is for the Board of Supervisors, but everyone here present, I'm praying for you all too. As Jeffrey said, I'm the care pastor at Crossroads Church in Casa Grande, and thank you for this opportunity to do the invocation today. I've titled this "Today's Accomplishments." Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what this board is setting out to accomplish today. The board has ideas, visions, hints, and daily instructions. They have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all of our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs one up and the pride that threatens the equality or the unquality of a body. Strengthen our confidence in you who have made us to be. Set all of us free, pardon me, from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives this board will encounter afterwards. Ready them to make every moment count. We thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Supervisor Surti, would you please give a question?
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, welcome to the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors' August 3, 2022, regular meeting. We are in order. First item is executive session. May I get a motion to convene into executive session? Oh, I'm sorry. I digress. I must mention that Supervisor Kavanaugh will be telephonically attending. Now then, may I please get a motion to convene to executive session?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we convene into executive session.
I have a motion. Is your second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no opposition, motion is passed. We're in executive session. We will be back in a few minutes. Don't go away. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is Supervisor Kavanaugh back on the phone? Yes. All right. So I have four ayes. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We are back in our regular meeting, that thing. Okay. Item number, let's see. So we will go to item two, call of the public. I see we have quite a crowd today. Are there people in the other room? No. Okay. So we will go to the first item I have here at hand. Let's see. I have, I'm sorry, I don't know. It's just, oh, Earl. Earl Dorr. Good morning. Please come to the podium and state your name and generally where you live, please.
My name's Earl Dorr. I'm in Precinct 28 in Contare Group over there. I'm a precinct committeeman with GOP, retired law enforcement, and I worked the last election. I was a marshal yesterday in yesterday's election, and actually, I spoke to Supervisor Goodman yesterday, and that was what I wanted to address. So you have an issue with lack of trust of your voters, and I know this county didn't have the issues, sorry, this county didn't have the issues that Maricopa County had, but it takes like used car salesmen. All you need is one to hose you over. You don't trust the rest of them. Okay. So we came into that, first off, your ballot boxes for the Queen Creek election, the poll pad, things were stuck in it. So my, the guy that was running this thing, the inspector, he didn't realize that was the actual ballot box. But it's a ballot box with not, no locks. Locks got delivered later. It didn't have a slot to put it in, so we had access to it. So since my inspector didn't see it right off the top, we just put the transfer bag out there, and the first three voters that came in, the first guy goes, "This, this is unacceptable. You have access to those ballots. This is a legal issue." And he goes, you know, he was, and I thought, he's absolutely right. We're supposed to separate these ballots. So basically, we took the regular blue box that we have to lock and we don't have the key for, and I just put everything in there, because I know it's going to the same place. We can sort it later. We were trying to call and ask about that box. The phone lines aren't open at 5:30 when we're there. When they were open, they were backed up. We couldn't get through, or you're 12 in line, so 30 minutes later, they'd address an issue. We knew early on that we were going to be low on ballots. There's two kinds of ballots, and we were calling them by their numbers yesterday. So there's a PM3, which is for Santan Valley, which doesn't have the, doesn't have the Queen Creek issues on the back, and there's a PM4, which has the Queen Creek issues on the back, but we're not supposed to use that to vote. We have a separate Queen Creek ballot. So they told us about 20 minutes, and then it was about 20 minutes, and then it was about 20 minutes. We ran out completely at 1 o'clock. So I have Republican voters stacked up, waiting for those ballots to come. We'd already issued them their tickets, and we put chairs out for them. We were trying to be cordial, keep everybody was in a, yeah, was very cordial. But they're also watching Democratic ballots come, voters come through and pick their ballots up and go vote. It's pretty clear when there's a blue one being picked up, right there at the voting tables or not. So it just didn't look good, and we had some people leave that were, that were angry. Then you had issues like fill pens. Fill pens were an issue in Maricopa County last time, and I was assured that they weren't an issue here, but I had a lot of, lot of voters jam me about that.
Mr. Dorr, I'm going to ask you, your time is up at three minutes, so can you conclude, please?
Sure. You need to have better training. You need to educate your public about things like your fill pens. Paper's cheap, trust is not, and you had only about 500 votes cast. So out of those 500 votes, that was not a, we, last one I worked, we had 1,000 votes cast. So we didn't have too many people coming in. We just had too few ballots, and they weren't delivered. And when we did get ballots, they were PM3s anyway, and they're folded and they say early voting on them. So I asked earlier, can we use those and do the, do the Queen Creek ballot? They told us no. So anyway, you have some issues. I'd be more than happy to talk anytime you want or answer any of those questions, but firsthand, it wasn't good.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, Kathleen Nowak. Please state your name and generally where you live.
My name is Kathleen Nowak. I'm, I live in Santan Valley. I'm the district chair for the Republican Party out there, and we have got some problems, and you guys know it. We are angry. We listened when you said the ballot box or the ballot misprint and so forth was human error. I said at that time, we needed to rid ourselves of the problem. I'm telling you, we got to get rid of the problem now. The Elections Department is a problem. They have no ability to upgrade and renew the poll worker list. I was told they had 1,500 to 2,000 people on that list, and yet, two weeks before the time, they called me and said, "Oh, we need 10 to 15 more people in your district." So I recruited 11. None, very few of them were actually used. 10 days before the election, I got an email saying, "You need 30 to 35 people in your area as poll workers." My friend over in AJ got an email saying she needed 60 to 65 workers in that area. What the heck kind of planning is this, that they don't know what they're doing? I think you can see that the planning is lacking, that they're in disarray or chaos. The training is even worse. Earl went into some of the details. I could tell you stories about supervisors that said that were instructing people to give the wrong ballots, to pass out the wrong ballots, that they didn't know what time the polls opened, supervisors that didn't call their people to help set up the day ahead, had no interaction with them at all. And when we talk about ballots, now here is the important thing. Always, common sense tells you, you look to see how many ballots you sent out in the last election for the primary, so that you plan for even more. I had districts or polling places that told me they got 300 ballots and they've got a registration of regular, of Republicans for 3,200 people. We've got polling places where they sent out 50 Republican ballots and 50 Democrat ballots. We're three to one in this county. This, what, what kind of planning is this? What, what projections? And don't do the cover-up thing about how we had an influx of Republican voters and people turned in their mail-in ballot in order to vote there. My observers say there was six or eight or 10. This is not what the problem was. We didn't produce enough ballots and the, and send them out to the polls, and then we had them being printed in Coolidge, and you ordered, if you were the supervisor in Precinct 26, you ordered 50, and an hour later or three hours later, you'd get ballots that they were printing off in Coolidge. This, this is totally, completely unacceptable. My solution again is to say, "Let's rid ourselves of the problem and go to the people who have knowledge of how this is run in the past in Pinellas County." We've always had good elections. We've got some people that know. I think our recorder's there. I think there's other people. I think we've got attorneys who know the process and how it should be. We need to do something different in Pinellas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nowak. Next, Dan Dooley, please.
Good morning, Chairman, rest of the board. Precincts without ballots. Can't tell you, it's already a national embarrassment, and, but the most important thing is the damage to the citizens that couldn't vote. Enough said about that. I thought about it last night, tried to take my emotions out of it, and I thought about this. First of all, I've had over 20 years of quality assurance or quality control experience with a Fortune 500, Fortune 100 company, and the first thing that, that came to my mind was, "You've got a serious quality assurance problem, structurally as well as qualified people that really know about quality." And quality is many things, and I'm not going to preach about it, but let's look at it like this. You've had two major problems in the last few months. First time was seven localities where the ballots were messed up, okay? I can deal with one or two, maybe as a statistical analysis, maybe one locality, but seven? Okay? And then a month or so later, we are running out of ballots in 12 or 12 to 20 precincts. That statistically is ridiculous. I mean, it's unacceptable. The only thing I could think of is that there are no standards, weak standards, no continuous improvement process within that department and/or the county. Maybe there is. I'm not trying to bash the whole thing, because I think the county overhaul runs pretty well, but this is, this is second time in a, in a short time. Easily fixed. These things can be easily fixed. The second thing is administrative problems, which tie into a quality control or quality assurance program. You either don't have enough qualified staff or enough staff at all in certain areas. The second thing, and it probably is something you need to review, is the vetting or interview process is faulty. You can't bring in a new elections director and have these problems in such a short amount of time. Now, I'm not trying to be, attack that individual, but just look at it collectively, how does this happen? So the job performance, the expectations are low in some cases, and there has to be some way of measuring that. So again, if I emphasize anything, it's something that, like that, that has to be reviewed from top to bottom, and that means county manager, board of supervisors, directors in the department, everybody plays a part. So I think if you have any questions on that, I can certainly give you my input, because I've had experience in this before. In the private sector, these things are rectified pretty quickly, and you, you can't sugarcoat this kind of stuff. It's, this is the problem, and this is where we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Steve Poe, please. Mr. Poe.
Thank you. Good morning, and I'd like to first say thanks to Mike Goodman for showing up yesterday to address the concerns that you're hearing about with the running out of ballots. He was very thorough in his explanation on what was going on, but it kind of blew my mind that we're printing ballots on election day, okay? That's inexcusable and unacceptable to all the people in Pinellas County. I'm sure of that. After the 2020 election, I volunteered to be a precinct committeeman. So I'm in Precinct 28, and that's where I was yesterday as a volunteer to be a poll observer. So I got to watch all the interaction, and I will say that Earl and his team were unbelievable. They calmed the whole situation down. Most people were okay. They came back and voted later, once we had the ballots, because we put a list together so that'll let them know that they're here. There were a few that got angry, and there was one that sat there and waited for about three hours for the ballots to show up. Mike came back later after we'd received the ballots, which I thought was outstanding, good follow-up. But unfortunately, all of this really, he told me that you guys hold responsibility for what happened in this, because you guys approved this new director of elections, David Frisk, I'm sorry, but I had to mention his name. He needs to be held accountable, and by being held accountable, I mean, he needs to be terminated. The first mistake was, you know, first mistake is shame on you, second one is shame on me. I don't see how we can go forward with this guy in charge of our elections, because we've got the general coming up pretty soon, and God only knows how this one's going to turn out, because as of 9 o'clock last night, there were zero in from Pinellas County. So I hope that you guys could do the right thing and replace this individual, and I don't mean just replace him and put him down into the committee somewhere. He needs to be removed from the system, and thanks for hearing me out.
Mr. Poe, would you please just state your name and generally where you live? I mean, I know you got to speak, but would you please, for the record, please just state your name and generally where you are?
I'm sorry, Steve Poe. I live in Queen Creek.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next up, Bill Hoff. If you would, please, we'll cut the formality. Please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Bill Hoff, resident of Queen Creek. I am a precinct captain, and in fairness to your time and those in the crowd, I'll make this short, I have had the privilege of sitting in on poll watching in three different states, and more so, the privilege of sitting in on the one in Queen Creek just two years ago. And watching the expression on people's faces when they came in yesterday to do nothing more than vote their conscience, being told we ran out of ballots, and then to complicate that further, not being able to tell them when or if they will ever come in. And the, the folks who, who waited patiently, then came back, they were instructed to come back before 7 o'clock, as Steve mentioned, they, we were able to get a little bit of a list together to call these folks, just to say, "Yes, they're in, hurry on down." The patience of these people was unbelievable, and it made me proud to be a part of the community, but we cannot allow this lack of ballots to ever happen in our community or frankly, anywhere else again. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Belinda Rodriguez. And again, please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I live in District 5, Gold Canyon, but have most recently, probably for about the last year, been helping in D2, because I lived in this area as well, and helping Kathy Nowak with a lot of her things to help in her district. So I've had some experience in state government, and I've owned my own business for over 22 years and many years of project management. I know you've heard a lot of the incidents so far, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot more, so I'm not going to dwell on a lot of those. I'm just going to say, by 10 a.m. yesterday, a lot of the precincts in, in our area had, had run out of ballots. You have access to voter history, as I'm sure the Elections Department does as well, because I just went to your site and downloaded it myself and could see the numbers. It would have taken someone 30 minutes to an hour to analyze that data and to see and evaluate how many ballots would have been needed at each precinct. For instance, Precinct 28, they had 3,276 voters previously. They received 350 ballots. I don't think it takes a genius to figure that math out, that they're going to run out. Every precinct received between 50, 350 is the highest amount I've, I've heard, yet we've overprinted at the precinct I was working at yesterday, 600 municipal ballots. I don't understand why, okay? And that, they only had voters registered previously of 607. Somebody's not doing their analysis. And you all know, in project management, there's a lot of different steps, okay? You have to have step by step, and somebody missed the research and analysis part in this whole thing. Poll observers, we scheduled, we started scheduling poll observers for both, and I'm speaking as to what I did in the areas that I helped, as early as May, and we had to turn in lists by June 15th. And then all of a sudden, we had all our stations filled, and we start getting phone calls from our observers saying, "I have to cross me off, because I'm now a poll worker." So we had to scramble up until the last minute. You know, Vicky and Kathy had to go scramble and fill those spots again, because they were taken by poll workers. We're looking to do whatever helps the county and the party and everyone involved, okay? But there's got to be better planning. We were told there was a list of 4,000 poll workers early on. Why are we waiting till the last minute to find poll workers? I spoke to a couple of the inspectors at the precincts, and they said that they did not ever receive any, any lists of their workers. One of them had to drive all the way to Coolidge the day before to get their list of workers in order to know who was going to be at that precinct. That's inexcusable. There's, there's got to be better design or assignment of tasks and responsibilities, okay? The last thing is that when I was, I stayed until everything was done and closed. The Public Works gentlemen were great. They picked up the boxes, and we were trying to, you know, quickly get everything together so they could take the whole cage. Nope. They were only going to take the boxes with the ballots. But what happened is, we left 475 municipal ballots, maybe 150 to, I think it was 272 in all, of all the other unused ballots. That's where the shenanigans happen. Why did we not secure those as well? That's, again, inexcusable, okay? Someone is not communicating. And again, I just, all I urge you to is, there are steps in project management, okay, that people have to take. You know, you have to initiate the project, you have to analyze, research, you got to plan, you got to execute. Execute means you have to put together a procedural plan, so that year after year, whoever comes in knows exactly what they're going to do. If that gentleman...
Please wrap up.
Yep. If that gentleman gets run over by a truck, tomorrow, somebody can step in and fill their role. And so I urge you to do that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Heather Tippel, I believe.
My name is Heather Tippel. I live in Santan Valley. I'm here to speak to you, and I do appreciate your time, thank you so much, this morning about our youth sports. I'm a resident, baseball mom, and I feel like it's extremely important that we start to work to get some fields for our kids for sports. We're at the mercy of the schools and using green space where we can find it, getting kicked out of HOAs, you know, running into all kinds of trouble here. I think you guys all can agree how important youth sports are. It keeps our kids goal-oriented, out of trouble, healthy, active. My son is 13, plays baseball. I asked him, "Cody, what, what do you feel you need a baseball field for?" And a 13-year-old gave me the description of, "It's like when you want to go to the beach, Mom, but somebody takes you to a splash pad." He's like, "That experience just isn't there." And he's like, "You can't feel the game when you're, you know, playing that in some grass, and there's holes everywhere, and no backstop, and balls are running into, into the street." You know, it poses a danger. Again, Mr. Goodman, I kind of read up on your history, and you know, I feel like your, your father, he started the Rough Riders, if I recall. I think he had the vision that the Santan Little League has right now for our kids. We need something. We need structure for them, and we're all here, we're willing to help. You tell me what you need, you tell me what you want, and I'm on it, whatever, you know. I will give that commitment to, to all of you and to our, our little area here. And I do understand complications that we run into of not being an actual town or city, so I do get that, but I feel as a, as a united front and as a group, we can make differences, we can make changes. This is something I really, really feel important need for our kids out here. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tippel. And Supervisor Goodman, your name was mentioned, if you'd like to respond.
Yeah, I would, thank you. And I appreciate that, and a tribute to my father, I appreciate that as well. And I'm fall, I'm falling very short on my dad's accomplishments, I'll tell you that right now, I see that, so, but just so you know, and, and I appreciate your willingness to step into the wind with me, the storm, because that's really what we're doing, and I'm going to take you up on that, because we've been in the process over the last two years, working on this very issue that you're talking about, and specifically for the Little League program. So we're taking a lot of initiatives, so anyway, I'll, if you'll get with me out directly following the meeting or get ahold of my staff, and we'll, we'll get you into the loop. Thank you so much.
All right. Next would be Daniel Vincent. For the record, please state your name and generally where you live.
Daniel Vincent, Santan Valley. Obviously, speaking on the same issue, I'm a board member with the Santan Valley Little League. I think we spoke on the phone three, four weeks back. I appreciate everybody's time on this, on this matter, so I'll try to be as, as quick as possible. Santan Valley was established, the Little League was established back in 2011 as a charter through Little League International. Ever since, we've struggled to find fields. We use Copper Basin, Walker Butte. We've tried to look at other places, but it's, every field's almost exactly the same. It's through FUSD, and barely any of them are playable. We're bleeding funds, the funds that we've raised for, to give kids scholarships to play in these youth sports, and we're bleeding funds, just trying to take care of and maintain the fields that the schools are not, are, aren't maintaining, you know? And they just raised the rates, almost 67 percent. And they just raised the rates, almost 67% a couple of weeks back. And that's a lot. And that is a lot of money that we're going to have to pay to play at these fields that are in poor condition as is, that we're spending, we're using all the, all of our money to, to make them better and not getting a cut from it, you know? They're not doing us any favors there. The population is well over 100,000. Queen Creek, they've got, I believe, three complexes right now, baseball complexes and softball complexes, and building four and five as we speak. And it's just, it's extremely disappointing that we haven't been able to do that here. And I know, I've got an older son that's 18, that kind of grew up in this whole system, so I was doing this in 13 and 14 when it was brand new. And I remember then, we were still trying to find fields and here we are, almost 12 years later, still, still fighting the same cause. I just, like, she had spoke, said, like, "We are here to help, like, we just need some land and, and we'll build it," you know? "We just need help locating that or, or knowing of, of what's for sale and what is able to be leased or purchased or whatever, so we can, we can build that here," you know? I think everybody on that board in, in Little League is, is trying to fight for the same cause. We are, we are on this thing till we bring a complex to Santan Valley. I think most of our kids will probably be grown and out of Little League, but it's for the next generation, you know, and generations to come, hopefully. So, Daniel Vincent, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vincent. All right, next up, Ralph Atchew.
Mr. Chairman and Board, my name's Ralph Atchew. I live in Eloy, Arizona. And Eloy had its fair share of election problems as well, but that's not the topic I'm, I'm speaking on. As a longtime citizen of Pinnell County, I've become growingly concerned about the politicalization of the Pinnell County Sheriff's Department. While I fully understand that this is an elected office and as such, will have candidates taking partisan positions, it is becoming apparent that Sheriff Lamb is crossing a line that we consider to be dangerous. Pinnell County has a diverse population. We come from all walks of life and hold an infinity of political and policy perspectives. Due to his extreme right-wing activism, however, Sheriff Lamb has directly put those of us who disagree with him on notice. He does not represent us and we fear that he will fail to uphold his oath of office to serve and protect us. Sheriff Lamb has publicly aligned himself with radical conspiracies such as anti-vaccinations, the big lie, and stop the steal. He has voiced support for the January 6 rioters and encouraged the formation of militia groups similar to the Proud Boys and Oath Keepers, now known to have organized and participated in the violent storming of our Capitol. He's affiliated with Protect America Now and similar organizations that lobby for a more militarized police force and the building of an army to fight against our democratically-elected government. Sheriff Lamb and a few other so-called constitutional sheriffs describe themselves as the supreme legal authority in America and therefore put themselves above the authority of both the President and the Supreme Court of the United States. My references and quotes can be found in publicly printed news articles and are readily available. If upon request, I will supply them. Pinnell County needs a sheriff, a law enforcement officer, and not a reality show character. The Pinnell Board of Supervisors has an oath sworn duty to serve the people who reside here. When the elected sheriff demonstrates that he is no longer to be trusted to uphold his oath of office, it's time for this board to investigate and take action. The citizens of Pinnell County deserve and should expect nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atchew. Susan, I believe it says, Wortman.
My name is Susan Wortman. I live in Casa Grande. Greetings to all of you. I'm here to share my perspective of my late husband, Dr. Randy J. Wortman, who is part of the Posse. When Randy retired from education in 2006, he decided to be a member of our county's Posse because he felt it was, be an important way to give back, to give back to our community and do something to help Casa Grande besides personal growth and adventure. Volunteering has always been part of our lives and helping to bring safety to our community members was a wonderful goal for him to work on. But back then, there were several tests that proposed Posse members had to pass in order to be an official Posse, Pinnell County Posse member. However, Randy was able to pass the target gun test, but didn't pass the entire weapon test because he was not able to reload the gun fast enough. At that time, his Parkinson's disease was slowing, getting worse, and Randy dealt with this issue as he always dealt problems. He effectively, effectively problem solved, thought creatively out of the box and figured out a different way to be a Posse member. Randy didn't give up at all. He proposed a recruitment program to find new members and offered himself as the head of this proposed project. And so Sheriff Chris Vasquez and the Posse officers decided that his communication skills were so effective, they kept him in the Posse for the purpose of doing, of recruiting new members. So Randy became a form, a formal Pinnell County member. Since his main assignments were recruitment and publicity and public relations, Randy would want to make sure that all of you know that it's a highly trained, specialized uniform group and they do a lot of extensive training and, and duties. When Randy recalled his activities with the Posse, he concluded that political issues did divert the sheriff's attention from Posse projects and, and so some of the volunteer program was kind of ignored. When Randy was part of the Posse, he respected Sheriff Chris Vasquez, who was our sheriff's, county sheriff between 2005 and '09. The sheriff current, Mark Lamb, in my opinion, has politicized his job too far and has been focused more about, about power issues and, so he seems to be selective about which laws he's enforcing. My husband loved to be part of a group that was bringing safety to our community, but the message now seems to, from Mr. Lamb and other sheriffs around the country, seems to be that sheriffs are here to, here to protect your freedom, including freedom from your own democratically-elected government. I think our world has been so scary and crazy if we're afraid of our own sheriff. We all need to work on making our communities more safe. I think we need to be honest about where the unsafe elements are coming from. Please look at what's happening in our community. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Wortman. Lastly, here I have Margaret Baca.
My name is Margaret Baca and I'm from Casa Grande. To the Board of Supervisors of Pinnell County, I'm not sure what you can do about this, however, I do feel it is very important to bring this to your attention as well as the attention of the citizens of Pinnell County. Sheriff Mark Lamb has formed and participated, participates in groups called Protect America Now and True the Vote. My question to Sheriff Lamb is, and more, Protect America, more specifically, Pinnell County, from what? I don't recall any election problems from the 2020 election in our county. We actually saw Republicans win their races. We saw that the Pinnell County Board of Supervisors, with a majority, with a Republican majority, certified the 2020 election. It appears that Sheriff Lamb is looking for a solution to a nonexistent problem. Sheriff Lamb is trying to incorporate the ridiculous big lie theory and, most recently, 2,000 mules, nothing proven, into how he runs this office. On a county, state, and federal level, the 2020 election was deemed accurate and secure. All 60 lawsuits were dismissed because of lack of factual evidence. The United States Attorney General, William Barr, a Trump appointee, stated that there was no evidence of fraud. We can run around with our hair on fire crying election fraud with absolutely no proof or we can work to follow our Constitution and rule of law. Put divisive actions such as Project America Now and the True the Vote in the dumpster of bad ideas and move on. We don't need in our militia intimidating voters at election sites. Now then, because of the recent problems of the election that we just heard about, I truly believe that you should investigate this. This would be very prudent and if, and correct the mistakes that were made. But in no way do I feel that there is any fraud. So let's get on to the business at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baca. That's the end of my request. Are there any others who wish to address the board? Okay, I've got four, so I'm going to start, Ms. Smith, I'm going to let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors. My name is Nancy Smith, City Council Member for the City of Maricopa. In listening to all of the information that's been shared thus far, I want to make it clear, it's not just a simple situation where there were not enough ballots printed in the City of Maricopa. There's also this issue that the correct ballots were not given to our voters. In several precincts, we had voters that came to vote and were not given the supplemental ballot for the City Council race, and so that's a second problem. And I also see this as a systemic problem in the Pinnell County. Two years ago, City of Maricopa had ballot problems. I'm glad the City of Casa Grande did not, but the City of Maricopa did have ballot problems in one or two, I want to say one for certain, of the precincts where the council members were left off as well. So this is obviously a systemic problem, something that needs to be fixed. My recommendation would be to include city clerks in an evaluation subcommittee so that we can get to the issues of these process problems. And a simple solution would be that if our city clerk had given, been given a ballot from every precinct prior to printing the ballots, she certainly could have caught the problems initially. And then we also know, as of yesterday, that there are process problems in training and that we have to resolve those issues as well. So it's definitely a serious problem. And listening on the radio, it's embarrassing. Pinnell County was made fun of in every way, shape, and form throughout the day. It's become a national problem and it's something we must fix. I appreciate your looking at that and making some very, very solid recommendations and including the city clerks as part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, sir, turquoise shirt. Hey, stands out.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Bill Robertson, resident of Maricopa. I'd like to start off by saying, a month ago, you were handed a very serious problem with the debacle in the printing of the, of the ballots. You stepped up, you handled that in short order with what I thought was a very reasonable solution. We had a very large public campaign in Maricopa to educate our citizens on the two ballots, the orange stripe. You will be given two ballots and this is the way it will function when you get to the polls. The problem is, that's not what happened yesterday morning. As early as 8:00 in the morning, I had friends calling me saying, "We're at Precinct 80 and there's a stack of supplemental ballots and they have no idea what they're for. They're insisting we use the original ballots, which did have the city local elections on the back of." So was that an old ballot that was supposed to be tossed out? Were the new ones not even supposed to have that on? How did it get into circulation? So we have that problem with a systemic organizational problem and training. I don't know if the poll workers were some of those poll workers that might have had to get cast into their role at the last minute due to absenteeism or no-shows or what the case was, but there was definitely a problem with getting the poll workers trained. And it wasn't until 5:30 at Precinct 80 that they started giving out the second supplemental ballot. You know that county commission elections and city council elections are won and lost by a handful of ballots. This has the potential to affect the outcome of our local election in the City of Maricopa. We know that you work hard behind the scenes. We don't see that. We don't see the sausage being made, but gentlemen, you're not judged on the journey. You are judged on the results and you are hearing the results this morning. They're not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Next, Mr. Manfredi.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Vince Manfredi, I'm the acting mayor of the City of Maricopa. I'm also up for actual reelection, so it was a fun day at the polls yesterday. I own a business and I've owned businesses all my life and mistakes happen, we all know that. It's how we react to the mistakes and get solutions in place that determine how we move forward, right? Well, let's be clear, we can't continue to let them happen or else none of us would be in business long and I know a couple of you guys own businesses yourself. I'd never allow continued mistakes in my business and I wouldn't allow them as an elected position either in the City of Maricopa. We find solutions. The good news is that there were solutions found and we educated the people of Maricopa pretty well. Unfortunately, the education didn't happen at the poll worker level. So I'll give you a quick breakdown. In some precincts, they didn't open the precincts until 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning, not 6:00 a.m., 9:00 or 10:00, the precinct doors opened up for people to vote. If you wanted to vote before you went to work, it was impossible in those precincts. Ballots were not handed out to municipal voters, even though those voters were begging for that ballot and fighting for that ballot. They were yelled at, insulted, and told to get out of the polling place, they're breaking the law, by asking for a ballot they were supposed to get because we educated them in knowing they were supposed to get that ballot. Nonstop for, what, three weeks, we told them, "Get your second ballot, make sure you vote on both ballot, oh, well, on one ballot for the municipal races." They were thrown out of the polling places for it. I asked them to go back, they got thrown out again. I went in and I got thrown out of the polling place, telling them, "Hey, you got to give them two ballots." We finally got it solved at 5:30 at night. So all day, those folks did not get municipal ballots, they did not vote, they were disenfranchised from voting. Education was a big issue. Our county attorney and others did a wonderful job. You guys had some videos out, I seen Jeff's video out. You guys had some great videos out, the county did some great work pushing that information out there. People knew they needed the second ballot, but we failed at the Election Department in training the people who actually handed out the second ballot. They refused. Now, a young man earlier said, "That paper is cheap and trust is not." That was the last issue that we faced when people ran out of ballots. We did not print enough ballots. How is that possible that we don't print enough ballots? That's a systematic issue, a problem with our Elections Department that needs to be solved. I'm not saying, oh, we all heard the saying, "The buck stops here." In this situation, it's you. Buck stops with you and you're responsible for what happens at the election. Buck stops with you, and you're responsible for what happens at the election department. It's your job. So please, make sure that when we get an election coming up for our general election, it's perfect, because we are, right now, being called the dirt people of Penal County on public radio. This is what we're being called. It's an embarrassment to us as Penal County residents, embarrassment to you as our supervisors, embarrassment to every elected official in Penal County. We have to make sure we do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. Mr. Vidiello.
Chair of Supervisors, thank you for having me here today. Councilmember Rich Vidiello from the city of Maricopa. I am also up for reelection. I'm not going to go over what everybody said about the elections, because there's no more I can simply say is, I'm going to go on the selfish side as counsel, as a candidate who had to spend, same with all the other people who had to run for election right now. We had to spend a lot of money to run for this election. Heads need to roll. I'm going to keep it short and simple. I spent a lot of money, I spent a lot of time. I probably spend 30 to 40 hours a week minimum campaigning. And again, I know this is emotional, I know this is selfish, but I, every candidate out there who ran for election may have to go to generals who shouldn't have to go. They may have to spend more money on advertising, they may have to spend more time away from their families, their children, their grandchildren, that we have to go spend all this extra time. So again, everything that everybody said is 100% true, but I want to know who's going to be accountable for this. I run a small business in the city of Maricopa, I'm the general manager. If this happened to my company, my boss would fire me instantly. If there's no accountability, this is going to be another issue that you're going to have to look at. People need to be accountable. Again, you guys came out, you did a great job fixing, yes, that was all true, but then the ball got dropped major at the polls. People didn't know what they were doing. They didn't know where their 75-foot marker was. I had to show them where that was. I had signs removed that I had to go back and re-put them back in, along with other candidates, because they didn't know where the 75-foot line was. We got thrown out of polling stations because we were trying to help them and let them know what was right and wrong, what were you doing wrong. This affects me greatly, because again, we look like a laughing stock. I'm a New York boy who just hits it straight in the middle, I don't sugarcoat nothing. Thank you for your guys' hard work, but the ball got dropped, and heads need to roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vidiello. Any others that wish to address the board? Mr. Bean.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman, members of the board. I did get an email, I believe it was, from the chairman here just recently, telling me that the issue that I wanted to address is going to be brought up sometime in August. I decided, I wasn't too sure when, let's kick it off now. The issue, up on the screen, number two, it says, "Call to Public." How many in this room, I'm sure the board knows, what does the word "public" mean? Who can come up to this speaker's stand and speak? It's anyone who is not an elected official. If an elected official comes up here during Call to the Public, they should be ruled out of order and told to return to their seat. If they want to speak to the board, they must be on the agenda. This is not an agenda place for that to happen. This happened back in June when Sheriff Lamb took this speaker's dais. He did start speaking to the board, and then he turned and started yelling and screaming and walking toward me, out of control, not speaking to the board, speaking to me. That should have been stopped immediately. Somebody should have banged the gavel and told him, you are out of order, take your seat. That did not happen. Further on this list, those wishing to address the Penal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission. He should have continually addressed the board. He instead wanted me to lose my freedom of speech. He didn't like what I said. That's fine, but he had no business telling me to retract what I said, to return to this dais and apologize. I'm sorry, you would have ruled that out of order. I cannot come up a second time. That was totally out of the question. I knew that, I don't know if Lamb knew that, but I hope the board knew that. This is not a second chance place to speak. I'm hoping that the Department of Justice looks in to the sheriff's actions on that day. He tried to rob me of my freedom of speech, my freedom to address the board and to do it correctly, and he did nothing correctly. Thank you very much.
What was his name? Tom Bean. Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh.
I'm requesting that you direct the county management staff to investigate the procedures and what has happened in this election. Would you please do that?
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Keller.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh, I believe you're asking to have something placed on a future agenda item and asking the county manager for follow-up on that item, and that can be done.
Does that satisfy your request?
It was not agenda item, it's the chairman's discretion to instruct the county manager to look into the issues that were brought up with respect to voting, and I'm asking the chairman to exercise that authority.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, and Mr. Lou will be looking into the election issues, I know, as we're already doing that now, so we will have further discussions. Does that satisfy your request, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could further that, that also includes our county attorney's office to be a part of that process?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yep. Mr. Volker, you've been invited to the group. All right. Any others? Mr. Rec.
I'm Noel Rec from Casa Grande. First, whatever election problems exist, what I'm going to speak to today is not the answer. I've been told by those who are knowledgeable that there's no oversight, no accountability, no recourse, and no present way to stop it, the "it" being the collaboration between Sheriff Lamb, his organization Protect America Now, and True the Vote. Today, as others have done, I speak to expose this alliance and the abuse of the sheriff's power in office that's being perpetrated in Penal County and beyond. Articles in Politico and the Daily Star, as well as their own videos being aired on the internet, clearly show the danger of this alliance. The first video shows Sheriff Lamb and the founder of True the Vote explaining their partnership as a nonpartisan effort to engage and educate confused and angry voters concerned about a lack of accountability when election processes break down, meeting out consequences when voting laws aren't followed, and thus restoring America's confidence in the electoral process. They soft-sell this by saying it's not about Democrats or Republicans, just the rule of law. A visit to their websites, however, tells quite a different story. It is quickly apparent that this is not a nonpartisan effort, but an extension of the Stop the Steal, Big Lie, Trump Won movement. True the Vote, which produced and promoted the debunked film Two Thousand Mules, explains that they will provide sheriffs across the nation with the resources and grants, training, and best practices to ensure that voting rolls are accurate, votes are counted properly, polls are operated properly, thus protecting the integrity of our elections. I ask, why do we need an outside extremist group to provide this? We don't. What exactly are they talking about providing? We don't know that, but I have a pretty good idea. This outside interference helped explain why some election officials and poll workers are leaving their positions, many afraid for their lives. It doesn't take much to see the resources, training, and best practices would be used to infiltrate the electoral process with supporters of the big lie to subvert, not strengthen the electoral process. I'm more the concern that mingling their money and assistance with that provided by taxpayer dollars makes all of us a party to this abusive power and the calamitous results that follow. Protect America Now's site features Sheriff Lamb in a video rant about law and order, open borders, crime-ridden cities, progressives taking their guns away, fighting back against the liberal takeover, calling out lies and fake news, as images of CNN and Dr. Fauci flash across the screen, pushing back against an overreaching government that wants to make America less safe, secure, and free, as images of President Biden flash across the screen, all in the pursuit of winning a purported battle for America's soul. And to help out, please donate $17.76 a month. Seventeen seventy-six, which was not coincidentally the battle cry of the January 6th insurrectionist. Does any of that sound nonpartisan to you? Is there any hope? Well, perhaps Sheriff Lamb can be voted out. Perhaps he'll resign and seek full-time employment with True the Vote. Perhaps he'll back out of this collaboration and work for his constituents as he should. Perhaps the Board of Supervisors can cut his funding for use in other areas since True the Vote is so willing to fund these activities. More reasonably, we can produce a citizens' initiative to change our constitution and rein in this excessive power so America's soul can truly be saved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rec. Any others that wish to address the board? In the back, please. Please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Loomis, and I am a new transplant. I'm here from, I lived in Maricopa County for the past five years, and just recently moved to Penal County in Gold Canyon. And I'm just going to speak about my incident yesterday at my new polling place, and how uninformed they were on how to handle my transfer, since I hadn't switched my driver's license over yet and had my new voter registration switched over yet. They told me that I needed to go back to Maricopa County, since that's where I was registered to vote. So I then thought that this was funny, because they told me I couldn't vote where I lived in Gold Canyon. So I went to, back to Maricopa County, to my former polling place, where I had voted before, and then they said, no, you have to vote where you live. And they showed me in the Penal County guidelines, this is what you need to show them so that you can vote in Penal County. And I said, okay, I have all of that. And then I went back to Penal County to show them that, and when I went back to my voting place, they were out of Republican ballots, they had been out. They said that they had ordered them at 1:00. Well, I had gotten there at 4:00. So I said, well, I'll come back, I'll go home for a swim, and then I'll come back. And I came back at 6:00 then, and thankfully, they had vote, they had ballots, and they thanked me for coming back. But then we had to go through the process again, and they gave me a provisional ballot, but then the gentleman that was kind of overseeing everything said, I don't know if your vote is going to count. And I said, well, then, why am I doing this? And my vote should count, every vote should count. I'm a resident here, my vote should count. So I just want to explain that there's some education pieces that need to happen, and that I'm very disturbed about my experience yesterday. That's all. On this, on this particular portion of the agenda. I'll be back later on.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis. All right. Any others that wish to address the board? I'm going to have to call it soon, because we have a unfortunate, I'll get to you, we have a press conference at 1:00 that we get to attend. So, okay, sir, in the suit, yes.
Honorable Chair, our board members, good morning. My name is Glenn Walp, I reside in Gold Canyon. And I'm here, reference the president of the Adobe Organization in Gold Canyon, the Association for the Development of a Better Environment. I'm here to indicate that the association is opposed to the approval that is going to be presented to you today regarding the new sign by Center Stage Church. I think you're all familiar with the nomenclature of the sign, it's nearly five, five foot by eight foot. It's a digital reader board with animation on it, and one of the things I want to make clear, it has nothing to do with the degree of illumination. We understand that this board, if it's put up, will be less than what normally was there, and that's fine, but that's not the issue. The issue deals that the board, just like in the movie, The Jerk, when Steve Martin thought he was being shot at, and he said, it's the cans, it's the cans, it's the cans. It's not the church. We in the Association, Gold Canyon residents, we welcome the church, and you won't find anybody stronger standing before you that will welcome the gospel of Jesus Christ in the Gold Canyon. I stand strong in that, and I'll die on that hill. And so we wish them well, we wish them success. It's all about the sign. The sign is out of place, it does not belong in Gold Canyon. It is a, if you will, as an analogy, a type of Las Vegas-type sign. It's flashing, it's moving, it's large, even though I understand it'll be out between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM in the morning, that's not when people are out there. We took a vote, and hundreds of people in the Adobe Association voted it down, if you will, there were a few that said it was fine. If you look on the Facebook today, there was a poll taken yesterday, 45 people responded to that, most of them were against it, there were a few that didn't care, but the Adobe people and the citizens of Gold Canyon just feel it's out of place, and this is our concern. You approve that sign, there's nothing stopping all the other businesses on that strip from saying, hey, we want our sign, maybe larger, maybe smaller. We understand that Walgreens at one time said, hey, we want a flashing sign. The board at that time shut it down. You can bet who's going to be next if you approve it, and then we have other shops all up along the line. That's what the people don't want. Using the words of the people that responded, we don't want it to, the Kings Ranch Road turn into a mini Las Vegas Strip. That's all we're saying. We love the church, we welcome them, we just don't want this sign. There's another sign going right up, there's another church right next to it, a Baptist church, they're putting in a sign right now that costs them thousands and thousands of dollars and fully complies with your current rules. There's just no need for that sign there. And so respectfully, I'm asking you to consider that when you vote today, that the citizens of Gold Canyon, those that responded to our votes, said, no, we just don't want it. And I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walp. Any others? You've been here. I'm sorry, ma'am, that you, yes. I don't know your name, I just have to point. Sorry about that. And just, and just as a note on the sign, there will be a chance for you to speak later, there's a public hearing on this, so you don't need to do Call to the Public, you can come back at the public hearing.
Well, then, maybe I should do that, because I have some facts and figures that I'd like to present that are more specific than what Glenn just mentioned. So.
That would be great.
I could save you some time right now.
I forget which number it is, but it's downstream, which one? Number nine, so it'll be in a little bit.
Okay, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. Any others that wish to address the board? Mr. Ravelis.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon, frequent user of the podium.
I believe you get miles for this, as a flyer.
Truth, transparency, and accountability. That has been my theme over the last two decades that I've appeared before this board and its previous iteration, when it was a three-member board. But I recently was subjected to the intimidation referred to by a previous speaker when, at a previous meeting here in this room, Sheriff Mark Lamb walked up to me and pointed at me, and you're hearing this again, and said, you and your fellow Democrats are destroying our country. No, Mr. Chairman. destroying our country. No, Mr. Chairman, Democrats are not destroying the country. Neither are truthful Republicans destroying the country. It is people who take advantage of fear-mongering and the big lie. And so today's election calls for calmness on the part of your constituents. And so I'm gonna overlook my prepared remarks to simply say, please, again, listen to those of us who have been over two decades, starting with the previous Sheriff Paul Bibou, who I can claim I brought truthfulness to this board that finally resulted in his removal from office by the voters. I ask again today, perform financial and performance reviews, not only on Sheriff Mark Lam, but on the disastrous chaos being caused by the Elections Department. Please do not ignore this request as other requests have been ignored. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelas. Any others that wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close call to the public, and we will move to County Manager's report. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further on the consent agenda, we do have an item regarding nonprofit contributions. And I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight an example of, of what good is being done in the community and the impact that those have in District Five. And this was from a contribution from the previous fiscal year for an organization, Good Shepherd. And we have a video that's gonna make the point much better than I can.
Good Shepherd Healing Ministries in Apache Junction.
I came here in 1985. I started buying and selling horses, and then I started saving horses. And I found that my calling was to save them, rehab them, and help them.
I've kind of felt like I've always had that connection with horses.
Some dilapidated horses in terrible condition come in. They save them. They, they get them fattened up and healthy. Then they find homes for them.
Some people drop them off in my driveway. I don't even know who they are. So am I gonna say to this horse, sorry, you have to go down the street? I'm not gonna feed you? No, I'm not gonna do that.
This is Esther. She's my horse. She's pretty stubborn, but most of the time we get along.
Volunteers are amazing here. And a lot of times you get kids from the inner city that come out that would never ordinarily see a horse, touch a horse, and they get to work with them. And it makes a lasting impact on their lives.
We're an inner-city school down in downtown Phoenix, and our kids are required to do service learning. So they have to come out. They have to give back to the communities. And so we brought a group out here, and they loved it. They cleaned stalls, they cleaned buckets, they groomed horses. And so now, every time they see me, they ask me when we're coming back.
We have some children with autism, and it's amazing to see that a horse will instinctively know this child is not gonna hurt me, and he's gonna help me. And so it's a bonding.
Kids that have some behavior problems and some major medical problems. It's just something calming for the kids when they're around the horses. Because, you know, they're big. And so they automatically know they have to calm down because the horse, you know, they, they're so small, and the horse is so big. So it's just a great pairing.
What are the two things out here that people love? Horses and kids. And this, this organization helps both.
Because of where my school is, it's really important for them to be somewhere where they can love somebody. So for them, cleaning and cleaning stalls to make it better for the horses was just, it's just what they want to do. They won't clean up the playground, but they'll come out here and scrub buckets and muck stalls. Yes.
It's very, very, very difficult, especially now because feed prices have gone sky high. And even the people that just have private horses, they're calling me and are trying to find out where, if I can't take them, who can take them. And they said, well, we've called to, to other places. They can't take them. It's becoming a large, large problem.
So each supervisor district has a little bit of discretionary money that we can help with charities. And I chose this one this time. It does so much good for the, more bang for the buck. So many people are touched. If you look around here, you're helping horses, animals, and kids. And, and it just makes a difference in people's lives. So I think it's well, well-spent.
I am going to tell you that this from Pinnell County was the biggest blessing ever. I have just been praying and praying, and there he was. There he was. And we've been able to get extra feed and, and all our shoeing or all our trimming done and just fixing things that truly needed to be fixed. And it's been a blessing. Jeff, you are a blessing. I want you to know that.
Expenses are up. Everybody knows what's going on with farm products and materials. And they just can't, it's totally donations, of course. So anything that anybody can do to help, it's greatly appreciated. And if you look around, they, they make wise use of it.
For her to open up her, just basically her entire life to want a rescue so that these animals have a place to go, but then to all the kids, and she loves them, she takes pictures with them, she walks around with them. It's just phenomenal. It's just a phenomenal place.
It's just a great organization. And I'm glad that I was able to help, and my office was able to help. And everybody helps. It's all volunteers. It's just a team, community effort. And it's great.
I feel like it just makes people stronger, like gives people a community, like, oh, everybody's willing to help these horses.
And it's very hard when we know that we can't help one, but we, we do our very best to try.
It would be sickening if something happened and it couldn't be here. Not only just for the horses that get saved, because, I mean, if you look around, where would you put them if this place wasn't here?
Just gonna keep trying to do as much as I can do to work with children and the horses. It's a beautiful combination. When you see children, even with anger problems or things like that, when they come here, it helps them.
That's it? All right. Item number four, Purchasing Division Report. Tara Peterson. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I am Tara Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinnell County, and this is your purchasing report for August 3, 2022. First, the board is requested to approve the following contracts. ROQ 226327, Jock for Housing Electrical Installation Repair, Renovation, and Replacement. We recommend J Mac Electrical LLC be awarded a contract beginning August 3, 2022. This contract will be used countywide. ROQ 226527, Jock for Housing Roofing Installation Repair, Renovation, and Replacement. We recommend post and beam construction be awarded a contract beginning August 3, 2022, and running through August 2, 2023. This contract will also be used countywide. RFP 230524, for Legal Publication Services. We recommend Casa Grande Valley Newspapers, Inc. be awarded a contract beginning August 1, 2022 through July 31, 2023. This is a one-year contract and is used countywide. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 175723, for Human Resources Investigative Services. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Four to exercise the optional extension period beginning August 29, 2022 with the following suppliers. Investigative Research, Inc. and Tran Associates, LLC. No further extensions remain, and the contract is used by the Human Resources Department. RFP 180423, for Maintenance, Repair, and Operating Supplies, including Generator Maintenance Services. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Four to exercise the optional extension period from August 29, 2022 through August 28, 2023 with the following suppliers. Advanced Mechanical Services, LLC, American Refrigeration Supplies, Inc., Climat Tech, LLC, Coolidge Ace Hardware, Maricopa Ace Hardware, Napa Auto Parts, Marana, Napa Day Auto Supply, Prime Generator Solutions, LLC, Shaw's Interiors, Incorporated, True Value Hardware, Galaxy Service Company, Inc., Mel's Auto, Refrigeration Supplies Distributor, Regals Enterprise, LLC, DBA Dubs Plumbing and Supply. This contract is used by the Facilities Department. IFB 190324, for Aggregate Slurry and Portland Cement. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Four to exercise the optional extension period beginning August 21, 2022 with Cal Portland and Vulcan Materials. This contract is used by the Public Works Department. RFP 203026, for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Two to run concurrent with the existing contract whose term began on June 30, 2023 with Timothy Rogers of Rogers Legal Group, PLC, and the Law Office of Mark Talan. This contract is used by the Public Defense Services Office. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO Number 247424 with West Law in the amount of $110,000 for legal and investigative research services used by the county attorney. PO 247524 with Midway Chevy in the amount of $184,089.29 for new vehicle purchases used by Fleet Services. PO 247525 with Midway Chevrolet in the amount of $131,492.35, also for new vehicle purchases used by Fleet Services. PO 247620 for Midway Chevrolet in the amount of $114,62.16 for new vehicle purchases used by Fleet Services. PO 247622 with Midway Chevrolet in the amount of $228,124.32 for new vehicle purchases used by Fleet Services. PO 247623 with Midway Chevrolet in the amount of $228,124.32 for new vehicle purchases used by Fleet Services. PO 247654 with High Tech Network and Security Solutions, LLC in the amount of $214,696.39 for UPS and Coolidge Upgrade, I'm sorry, Cooling Upgrade Hardware Assembly Startup used by the IT Department. PO 247655 with Wex Bank in the amount of $249,999 for fuel card services used by Fleet Services. PO 247657 with Baker &amp; Taylor Books in the amount of $220,000 for books used by the Library District. PO 247659 with Sabino Electric, Incorporated in the amount of $166, sorry, $76,790 for secondary UPS system, including equipment and services used by the IT Department. And finally, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition 164825 with Wex Bank in the amount of $2314,000 for fleet card services used by Sheriff's Office. And requisition 165165 with Midway Chevrolet in the amount of $964,791.38 for a new vehicle purchase used by Fleet Services. And that concludes your Purchasing Division Report for August 3, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you still there? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. All right. In that case, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Purchasing Division Report presented today.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Item number five is Consent Agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So are there any items that the board, the county manager, or public wish to pull? I already have item U pulled by Mr. Billingsley from Planning and Development. Are there any other items anyone wishes to pull? Seeing none. May I get a motion, please, for items A through H minus U?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A through AH minus U.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Mr. Billingsley, item U.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would ask that you continue this, this item. We have under review and are about to approve a final plat for Unit 19 of Saddle Brook. The developer contacted me last week, and they want to split that Unit 19 into two separate phases. And by doing so, they want to complete one phase before they start on the second phase of that parcel. So they will have to post two separate financial assurances, one for Phase One, one for Phase Two. So I would ask that you continue this item, and we'll come back at a future meeting.
You wish to continue it or to withdraw?
Withdraw.
Withdraw. Sorry.
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Just checking. Okay.
Yes, sir.
You know, all the words, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so, very well. So may I get a motion to withdraw Consent Agenda, item U?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to withdraw Consent Item U.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. It will be withdrawn. Item U. All right. Moving along down the line, we will, let's see. Recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to convene into special district meetings. We will move on to open the Flood Control District Board of Directors' meeting. Consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Let's see. Are there any items that the manager, the board, or the public wishes to pull at this time? Seeing none. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B on Consent Items as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn the Flood Control District Board of Directors' meeting, and we will move to the Public Health Services District Board of Director Meeting. Again, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Are there any items that the board, the county manager, or public wish to pull at this time? Seeing and hearing none. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Consent Items A, B, and C of the Public Health Services District Meeting.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now reconvene the Board of Supervisors' regular board meeting, and we'll move to item eight, discussion approval of an electrical easement to Trico Electric Cooperative. Mr. Petty, you are up, sir.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, Vice Chairman Sertie, members of the board. I'm here to finish the electrical easement conveyance for 152-foot easement to Trico Electric. So they'll be able to deliver power without going through the old infrastructure of the airpark to a new development that we're working on. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Petty?
No, I don't.
Where did the board go? Here we go. Do you have any questions, sir? Mr. Kavanaugh? Any questions?
No questions.
All right. So in this case, no questions. So may I get a motion for item eight, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item eight as presented.
May I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And just to be clear- And just to be clear, this item requires unanimous consent of the Board. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Did you want me to do a roll call? That worked okay. Okay, thank you. Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Petty.
Thank you.
Item Number Nine is Public Hearing and Discussion, Approval/Disapproval of Case CSR-003-22. And I believe Mr. Abraham is up.
Jim's a lot taller than I am. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Today's Conference of Sign Review request is... There we go. Whoa, 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 there it goes. There it goes. Okay. Is located here in the Gold Canyon area in the northern part of our county, as indicated by the red star. This is the subject site of the proposal here. Zoning's in the immediate area surrounding the case. We have CR5, CB2, which is our commercial zone. It's immediately adjacent to a commercial zone, CB1, and Kings Ranch Road is approximately here, moving through. An aerial photograph of the subject site showing the area surrounding the property is substantially developed, mini storage facility across the street. There's some shopping opportunities kitty-corner to the south and west. The site immediately adjacent to the north and east is also a church as well. Interestingly enough, the site is actually Zone CR5 and is the site of a church that, obviously, the Center Stage Church. This is about maybe a quarter of a mile north of the intersection of US 60 and Kings Ranch Road as you're going up into the Gold Canyon area. Showing property divisions in the immediate area, so it's largely subdivided through subdivision plat approved several years ago and substantially developed. The red circle around there indicates the notification area of today's case regarding our mailouts. And then further zooming in on zonings in the immediate vicinity. Now, just to give some background on CSRs, I think this is the first time we've had to have a public hearing on a CSR in a while. And C, Contrary to Sign Reviews are requests from folks who want to exceed the sign code in terms of area, or number, or location, and/or type of signage as well. So most Conference of Sign Reviews, there are some director authorized allotments that can occur, so whenever some signage is proposed, that's beyond the typicals of the sign code. There's two routes. Either the director can approve it, or we ultimately have to take it to the Board of Supervisors because it's beyond those limits that we've installed for the director. So the sign itself is located, is basically going to be this. So this is a electronic reader board sign. You know, not expecting everyone to be immediately familiar with the area, but this is the pedestal that the previous sign is located. I was up in the area on some other business, and the previous sign has been removed. And we've got this electronic reader board sign here that's going to be approximately five feet in height total, and then about eight and a half feet wide. And actually, that's what the sign used to look like on the north or on the top photograph there. Now, just to warn everybody, the sign is not going to be the one on the south picture, but a much smaller version. However, this is used to illustrate the type of graphics that can be illustrated on the sign. So it's like many of the other electronic reader boards that you see when you're driving throughout towns, that it's fully animated. It can be a variety of different graphics and different light levels. Well, there's the subject site there. So our church property is on the northern part of that, and then the sign is indicated and shows approximately 50 feet to the Kings Ranch right-of-way. Interestingly enough, the current road surface of Kings Ranch is not reflective of the total right-of-way width, so there's a large amount of space in between the road and then the actual church property. But there's our sign there with the circle, and then some electrical diagrams that are part of the application, but really not really 100% relevant to the type of sign we're seeing today. So the proposal was looked at by our Sign Review Committee. They ended up recommending denial of this request, and they cited some four reasons for that, and basically to paraphrase that there didn't appear to be much merit for the sign request, that given the site's location and its environment and larger context with other development in the immediate area, the sign didn't appear to really, the request didn't have the merit that it needed. However, the director, our Community Development Director, who's also the zoning administrator, he ended up recommending approval because it met our process requirements, and there's a number of stipulations that we asked that if the Board is desirous to approve this, that you install those stipulations of operation as part of the case. So this, one thing that we've heard, at least through the public outreach, is that the lighting of it will interrupt some dark sky concepts that the Gold Canyon folks hold dear up in that area. So we put a cap on the illumination levels, that it can only be .3-foot candles at the adjacent property line. .3-foot candles would be 1/3 of a BIC lighter held approximately 1 foot above the ground level, so they'll have to work with their photo cells and their light sensors to make sure that they adhere to that. Also, the sign will have to be shut off between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM daily. And then, of course, the message rotate every, or once every, say, no quicker than once every eight seconds, excuse me. So that's about it in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, excuse me, I'd be remiss. We did have some late arriving letters in opposition to this. Mr. Rich Haftal writes the Board and says that him and his wife are opposed to allowing the Center Stage Church. A gentleman by the name of Shaheen writes that the signage is also too big and too bright and urges denial of the case. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
So I have a quick question. So the previous sign that was there, can you back up to that?
Sure.
How large is that sign?
Looking at it, and the zone and the sign code would allow a 24-square-foot signage at that location.
Four by six?
Approximately.
And this one is five by eight?
That's correct.
And the sign code is size-wise?
Oh, so I just had that up.
You did, but I...
Let me see here. So 24 square feet in area, but single-sided.
24 single-sided, so this would exceed the sign code?
A little bit over double, yeah.
A little over double. And was that sign there illuminated?
I believe it was.
And no complaints from that?
No.
Was it? And you don't know possibly how bright it was?
And no idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions from the Board?
Yeah.
Supervisor Sertie.
What do you mean by animated?
So digital signs take advantage of the fact that their message can change quite rapidly. Most are programmed with a computer, and the message can be anything pertaining to pretty much anything nowadays because of some legal rulings that have occurred in the past. So typically, one regulation we put on signage is that the message can't rotate. It has to stay static for a certain amount of time.
So, yeah, I received lots and lots of correspondence on this as well, and one of the misconceptions seems to be that it's neon. This is in no ways neon.
No.
It is digital LED. So an example of this would be at every gas station, when the prices change, they're changed that way also. They all have this type of a sign somewhere on their property that, I mean, the prices change every day. I think that the applicants are here, and they're going to present. I'm going to, when they get up, I'm going to ask them to tone it down even more when they get up here. If I, right, Mr. Chairman, they will be speaking probably? Yeah. So I'm going to come back with this and take a light of questioning when it gets back to them.
Fair enough.
Any other, Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm just curious as to, you know, when it comes to businesses and things of that nature along these roads, why is it only single-sided? Why is it not double-sided? I mean, does our ordinance not allow that over there?
Not in this particular zone, no. Yeah, so I think the idea was, back when the sign code was created, that the sign would be mounted up against a wall perhaps, or a destination where the sign is facing the street and parallel with, rather than perpendicular to.
But right now, it's facing perpendicular. It's not straight out.
Right now, it is perpendicular. You're correct.
Oh, it's not vertical.
No. It's basically, it was that...
It's not parallel to the road.
It's not parallel.
It's not parallel.
Okay, vertical.
Thank you, guys. I needed that help, you know? I flunked Matt, just so you know.
I took a stab, just took a stab at that one.
Yeah. Or my angles. I flunked my angles, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Oh, Miller.
Supervisor Miller.
Somebody spoke earlier about this, you know, which is fine, but they said that we turned down an electronic sign for Walgreens, I believe he said? I don't remember that. I mean, I don't remember everything that I voted on in the last nine years, but, boy, that one, because I've been fighting sign ordinances for a long time, and I think I would have remembered that one.
If memory serves me correctly, this was many, many years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Which then leads me to one more question. When was this sign code enacted, and how many times has it been updated since it's been enacted?
That's a good question. So it was, I believe, the version you see today is about '93, and it's been updated maybe three or four times since that time period.
Okay. That's a long time.
Supervisor Goodman, and then Supervisor Sertie.
I guess to follow up with what you just stated, when was the last time it was updated?
We added some provisions in 2010 for A-frames and some temporary signage.
And so it's been since 2010 that we've done any updates at all?
That's correct.
And I got here in '12.
Supervisor Sertie.
Steve, the gentleman that spoke earlier said that this could lead to a chain reaction of every business wanting to go bigger. This, what is before us now is kind of a special use, one time. How do we prevent this from happening again, and every business trying to one-up each other?
Well, that's a great question, because the code right now would require every single applicant who wanted to do something similar to go through this exact process. So they would end up in this venue every single time, and so it would end up being a function of the Board. Long-term, we'd have to look at amendment criteria, possibly what are some of the situations you need to present to get in front of the Board of Supervisors with sign requests. But most jurisdictions have some sort of mechanism to allow for folks to ask for things that are beyond the scope of the code, and most of the time, it ends up here at the Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Miller.
These signs are being used all over. I mean, I just was on a vacation trip, and I don't know how many of these illuminated-type signs you see throughout the United States, and not just in Arizona. And I mean, they're popular in Arizona. My point being, is there a sign code that maybe we ought to be looking at to update something from 1993? And again, there's a lot of things that have changed in marketing methods. There's a lot of things that have changed. And there, I mean, there are ways to make these toned down and a little less, I guess, for lack of a better word, offensive, because these signs seem to be offensive to some people. But they do work 24/7, 365, for businesses and for people that want to get the message out. These lighted signs actually, I don't know a city or a town or a county that doesn't have them on wheels, where they take them out and use them, you know, for all different types of events and traffic controls and those kinds of things. In other words, they are kind of a, almost a safety way of being able to get a message out. So I digress, I guess, with my editorial side of this thing, but I think we really should try and get up to speed with the latest.
But I believe the issue at hand is, as you stated, they're not allowed in this type of zone, is it zoning area? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So they are allowed in some kinds of zoning in the county?
So we're dealing with two requests here. It's a little larger than it's supposed to be, and then the electronic reader board. The electronic reader board is not allowed anywhere in the county.
Anywhere. That's what I understood.
Right. So then the size of this sign could be allowed in other spots in our county.
County only?
Supervisor Sertie first.
County only, because inside the municipalities, there are, you do see these.
Precisely.
Supervisor Goodman.
How are these in comparison, thank you, how are these in comparison with the other signage there in Gold Canyon?
Well, the other signage in Gold Canyon is definitely not digital, for sure. It's mostly low-profile, has that southwestern-y kind of theming to it. It's pushed way back from the Kings Ranch Road right-of-way due to the fact that the road surface is not representative of the entire right-of-way. So it's smaller, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? This, okay, I don't see one.
Nope.
Okay. So, okay, so this is a public hearing. I'd open the public hearing now. Are there those from the public that wish to speak? I believe I have Terry Lynn Cluser? I'm sorry, is that, did I murder that name?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can we have the applicant talk first?
Oh, it's not on my list, but yes, and I'm sorry, yes.
Should have had it.
It should be on there, and I'm sorry, the applicant is here to speak. There we are. Sorry about that.
I am Sharon Sheffer. I represent Center Stage Church. I am from Apache Junction myself. Of course, we are located in Gold Canyon for the church. I'm not exactly sure what I should say at this point, but I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak, gentlemen. And I think what I will do is just begin with a little bit of history of the facility, of our organization. Center Stage Church is a nonprofit religious organization incorporated in 2004. The first church services were held in a home. That quickly changed, and they went to a school facility to lease that lasted for a little while in East Mesa, and then we connected with Apache Junction Unified School District. And for the last 12 years, we've been leasing property facilities from them. They recently informed us that they needed their property back. We were in Superstition Mountain Elementary School at the time, so we started looking for a new home. We were thrilled when we found the one in Gold Canyon. The church was looking for an outreach program. So in 2014, we felt we needed some major event, something large, to help our church grow, to help bring people into our facility. So we developed a community outreach program, which is our theater. It's community theater that we invite all of community members to. It has been operating now since 2014. This will be our ninth season. Because we had a strong theatrical background inside the church, we felt this would be a really good way to reach out to the public, and most people like to get involved in performing arts in some way. And we open it up to everyone. It's, all members of the public are invited to come and be with us. They can be actors, they can be technicians, they can just volunteer, or they can come and be patrons to the theater. You have to have an audience in order to have a show. You have to have an audience in order to have a show. We generally present three or four Broadway-quality shows on an annual basis. Occasionally, we have weekend concerts. We have future plans to include youth programs. Previously, when we were at Smez, we had a youth theater that we would bring in and allow to use our space because theirs was too small. We've also partnered with the community, with Apache Junction. We had public meetings there for the neighborhood. We had health, not facility, health forums, where they would bring different groups of community health people in, and the community would be invited into these different, to talk with these people. In other words, we try to be a community partner. When we found our home in Gold Canyon, we were thrilled because we found out we could purchase the property and make it a permanent home. We've been leasing for so long, we've been just kind of disconnected with actually a property that we could develop the way we felt it needed to be for our organization. So when we found this, we were thrilled. The purchase process is in place. We hope to have it within the next 60 days actually be our own property. Our intention in the Gold Canyon community is to be a part of the community. We want to be involved in the community. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be, well, what we would like to have as a neighbor, somebody, you know, give and take. We just invite the community to come and be a part of us, and we want to be a part of them. As far as our sign, we had the sign in Apache Junction at the Smez location under a special use permit because there were two signs on the property. Generally, we use a six-second display change, which is recommended by the manufacturer, and we had the sign on for 24/7. Now, we are not opposed at all to having you place some restrictions on that. We understand and we appreciate the dark sky concept. We support it. We have no problem changing what we do to fit what is needed in the community. The size of the sign, I believe, I wasn't aware that it was too large. The sign that currently there, to our measurements, is a five-by-10. Ours is a four-by-eight, and we are two-sided. The sign that there, I believe, has a header on it, a lighted header, that might take up an extra foot to make the difference. But square-footage-wise, I didn't understand that we were that much larger than what was already there. But it's a tasteful sign. It's not, I don't know how to describe this. I'm not a technical person. But the illumination of the sign, the LED sign, is much less than the white fluorescent bulb sign. We believe our sign is aesthetically pleasing. It is set back from Kings Ranch Road. It is not immediately on the Kings Ranch Road. So it is not a distraction for drivers' passing. And we feel the sign can be compatible with the dark sky concept. It can be eliminated at whatever level we need. We can run it at whatever speed we need. We're just pretty well willing to cooperate with whatever you decide we should do. We would just like to use our sign, because it costs a lot of money. And it's something that our patrons are older citizens, and it helps them find us. It helps them know where Center Stage Church is or Zale Theater Show is. We found even on Ironwood Road, as busy as that street was, the sign helped a lot. But even so, people still missed us, and it was sitting right out on the street there. So I, do you have any questions that I could answer, maybe?
I can do a quick question. Your present sign, I believe you said it's like five-by-10?
I believe that's the size of it.
Okay, I see measurements on this picture. Is it, it's two-sided, correct?
You know, I have never really paid attention to that. We dismantled the fluorescent bulbs out of it, so I've only seen it lit maybe once. I think Ms. Klukar probably can answer that better than I can, because she was at the church next door to us, so she probably knows more about that sign than I do.
I'm just looking at where it was. I would guess that it was two-sided, because you had the stick on the snap-in letters.
Yeah, and I've really never paid any attention. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Sertie?
I do. You said you're willing to compromise even more. The eight seconds, it's not going to flash, but as you see it change the message, it would appear to, you know, off the corner of your eye, you'd see something change. Can you slow that down even more to, say, 15 seconds or so?
Sure, if you think that's what would be helpful to the community and to the drivers going by, if they're willing.
And what time do your shows end?
Our shows generally end around 9:30 or 10 o'clock.
So there's no need for the sign to be on till 11 o'clock. Could you go 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock? I mean, the most obnoxious lights, you know, you speak on your own background. We have Prospector Park in Apache Junction. The brightest lights are the ball fields. They have to be off at 10 o'clock, and sometimes earlier. So is that a concession that you could make as well?
Sure. 10 o'clock wouldn't be a problem. Our patrons get to the theater, and once they're there, they're generally fine. It's just finding us initially. When they leave, yeah, 10 o'clock would be fine.
If a motion is made, do those have to be in the motion, those two?
We have to amend the stipulations.
We'd have to add the stipulations, yes.
Okay. Also, Sue, did you say you'd offer to offer up the space for community meetings?
Yes, we do. We are more than willing to open up. In fact, we're negotiating with the Homeowners Association right now to use our facility for their meetings.
Okay.
So yes, we're very open to that.
Also, in downtown Apache Junction, they have the marquee sign, and anybody can petition to have their message on that sign. Is it possible that other groups in Apache, in Gold Canyon, for instance, Adobe or one of the HOAs, during the off-times, can they put up their messages? Or like emergencies, let's say there's a crash at Florence Junction, could you put up, can someone program it to say, "Hey, we're closed at Peralta," whatever, or someone else is having an event? Can you offer up the sign for the whole community to use?
Sure, we can do that, definitely.
And you mentioned, when you do do the theater, are these actors from all over the state? Where do you get them, and what are the opportunities for the locals to participate and actually be actors or stagehands, et cetera?
We have open auditions for every show that we produce. The people come from clear over to the west side of the valley to come out and play with us. Community members are welcome to come to any of the auditions. If they prefer not to be on the stage, but they're technically-minded, we have openings for people to do technical work. We always have need of volunteers to help with costuming, ushering, backstage prop-moving. We always need people. So anybody who wants to be involved in theater is welcome to come, and we'll give them a job.
And-
But there's no pay with the job.
For the actual performances, a cover charge is charged? Is there a profit made, or is this basically a nonprofit? How does that all work?
Basically, this is a nonprofit, yes. We, most of the money goes back into the next production. It's very costly to get the rights to do these shows, especially the musicals, and that's our favorite thing to do. It's costly to create the props, to get the costumes. It's a very expensive endeavor. So we look at it as a community outreach program versus a money-making situation. Whatever money that is made is put back into the facility. We bought the theater, bought the chairs, the new chairs we use. We had, at the other building, we had to have a big scissor lift for the ceilings. The theater purchased that. We put all the money back into doing something for the church or the theater. It's basically all used up.
Gold Canyon is a very artful community, so I think you could get, I mean, if you get the right volunteers there, I mean, they would thrive at that. And there's already art fairs that happen. Is it in the parking lot where you're at, or in the bigger one? I think they have an art show there a couple of times a year, and that's the kind of thing that I mean, that you could use a sign to advertise, you know, this Saturday art show, you know.
I think-
And then that could alternate with your message. If you have a show, then yours goes off, and then you would advertise for the community art show as well.
Sure.
That would be great for the community, I think.
We have no problem with that.
I don't have a question for you, but Mr. Abraham, quick question. So just a quick question for you. So much is made of the dark sky concept. I keep hearing dark sky concept. And I know, I don't believe our lighting code actually discusses anything to do with a dark sky concept. Is that true?
It is. I think a more accurate is, would be not as bright light code, basically. The words dark sky is that it recognizes the intent of the ISNEA, I believe is what it's called. But the code does not resemble your dark sky-type places like Sedona or Coconino County. It's not even close.
And there is no designation there, and we don't have that in our code?
That is correct.
Thank you. Clarification. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that was, that was one of my questions. I don't believe we have an ordinance, a dark sky ordinance in Penal County. So that being said, the dark sky ordinances, though, when in place, typically monitor and regulate upward lighting. In other words, it's, you know, it's because it goes into the air and diminishes the ability to look at the stars or what have you. So is there anybody here from, was it Summit, is the sign maker? Is there anybody here from that?
Watchfire is the manufacturer. Summit is one of the people who maintain the sign for us.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, anyway, so my question really is, though, what is the illumination above the sign? I mean, that's what would be measured if we were, if we had a dark sky ordinance. What would be measured is how much penetration does the light go into, above the sign? And I, as I'm looking at that sign, if any, it's very, very minimal. It appears to be somewhat of a recessed apparatus to the sign. So I really am more concerned on the physics of this and the light, the candle lights being projected above the sign, because that's where it seems to be bothering everybody in the dark sky issue, even though we don't have a dark sky ordinance. So I'm really concerned. I guess, if nobody can answer that question, I think it's pretty minimal, if it is at all, of a projection upward from this sign.
When we contacted Watchfire Signs regarding the dark sky issue,
Yeah.
he referred us to, not Maricopa, Fountain Hills.
Okay.
They have a dark sky ordinance. The sign, very similar to the one that we have, was recently installed at a theater over there.
Okay.
And it meets all of their dark sky criteria. He said, "We can set the sign to whatever you decide it needs to be."
Okay.
So if there's a certain level of light that the planners feel is required, we'll go to Watchfire and say, "Okay, figure out how to set this sign for us," and we will do that.
We have to be below this rating, whatever it is.
Yes, whatever rating.
Whatever it is.
And he said it should not, it should be okay for any dark sky ordinance, because it doesn't have much illumination above the sign.
That's my point, and that's what I would suspect, because these signs are used quite frequently in areas where there are dark skies. And so there has to be a way to meter that, or monitor it, or understand that we are meeting the luminous readings that are allowed within dark sky areas. That's my point, if it makes sense to anybody.
A dull point. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd move on to the public hearing aspect of this.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And first I have, I'll try it again, Terrellin Kluker? Klukar, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I live also in Apache Junction unincorporated, and I'm opposing this because I used to be a code compliance officer for this area. And I'm familiar with message boards, reader boards. Walgreens does have one right down the street, but they were restricted in the ordinance to just time and temperature. Now, every now and then, they slip and they do some advertising, but they're only supposed to do time and temperature. It's a very small sign. And as a code compliance officer in the past, my two biggest complaints in this area were signs and lights. And I'm just afraid that this is going to open up a huge can of worms, as Glenn mentioned before. We don't normally allow these message boards, these reader boards. It's in the ordinance. It states specifically, "No flashing or intermittent illumination shall be used. Internally lighted signs may be reverse print. No sign or any portion of a sign shall rotate, move, or simulate movement by means of fluttering, spinning, or reflection devices, not including temporary promotional signs. Nor shall it contain an electronic message device except for time and temperature," which is what Walgreens has. "Nor shall it flash, blink, be audible, or be animated by any means." And I believe this was added to the ordinance because of the safety factors of people being distracted by these signs. Mostly, you see, you think of the big signs like on the highways in Phoenix and whatnot, and people will drive by and look at the signs. Maybe in this case, it wouldn't pertain as much because it is a smaller sign. But it is still four-by-eight, two-sided. So that's 32 times 64 square feet of lit sign. I can guarantee you, you're going to get complaints from the neighbors now. Can they tone it down? Can they limit the time? I'm sure they can do that. How do we know, though, until we actually get the sign installed, what it's going to look like? I mean, and they mentioned .3-foot candles off the property line. But .3-foot candles, I know, because I used to go and monitor lights in Gold Canyon, on an LED light, that's a lot of light. And if you have a light meter sometime, go out and just measure light in the neighborhood. And .3-foot candles is a lot of light off the property line. So in other words, I just think it's a dangerous precedent to start in the county to allow others to start doing these motion signs, the lit signs. I always thought Penal County was a more rural-based county. I know that we are growing, and there's more community involvement in this type of thing, but I still think that this is going to open up a huge can of worms. It's going to be hard to enforce. Who's going to go out there and stand at night? Is it going every eight seconds or every six seconds? Who's going to measure the illumination? In other words, I think it's going to be a problem with enforcement down the road. And as far as the look of the community, the dark sky ordinance, we don't have a dark sky ordinance, but we have a light ordinance that's very strict. All the businesses, residential areas, have their own measurements and restrictions in terms of how much light can be emitted from a property or a light fixture. So it is a strict, it's not called the dark sky, but it is a light ordinance.
Ms. Kluker, can you please wrap it up?
Okay. Anyway, that's all I have to say, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walp, you're back up, sir. Or not?
I just, a couple of seconds.
Please.
Thank you, and very good questions from the board, and I appreciate it. The concern that I'm hearing from the people that I'm dealing with is that they fear that once the one sign is done, then there's going to be another one, and there's going to be another one. And if you're familiar with Kings Ranch Road, it's going to turn into a mini Las Vegas Strip-type thing. The people that live there don't want that. They move there for the calmness, the quietness. They want to get away from that, and that's why they moved there. And that's the general feeling I'm getting from the people. They just don't want that street to turn into what they feel it's going to turn into. They just don't want that street to turn into what they feel it's going to turn into. Again, nothing against the church. It's just the sign. And I think the sign is way too big. It's going to be way too bright. And I can tell you, there are businesses on there, as soon as you say yes, they're going to be applying. I can guarantee it. Thank you very much, but I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Walp, would you, just for the record, please state your name and gender.
My name is Glenn Walp, and I reside in Gold Canyon, Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could I ask Steve Abraham a question?
Supervisor Surti, go ahead.
Could I ask Steve Abraham a question?
Yes, sir.
Does being double-sided, is that cumulative effect, is that what makes it too big?
Yes.
So, this would be another possible concession that just came to me. Since they had a one-sided sign before, could they mask off the backside and just go the front side, and then it would be conforming, would it not?
I believe it would be. Yeah, that would be something that they could agree to.
And we've thrown in so many possible concessions, I don't know if maybe this could be, come back at another time, where we could also talk about the, what is the amount of lumens and how does, how does that get measured? And I also believe there is an upcoming meeting, and I don't have the time just to talk general, dark skies in general. So, that's another whole thing. So, anyway, I'm throwing that out there if the applicant is listening.
Okay, thank you. And another person of interest, let's see. Mr. Ravelis, you're up, sir.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon, representing Gold Canyon Community Incorporated as president of the board. Our involvement in this issue dates back to a year ago, when we actually surveyed the community on various concerns of the community. And dark skies was a top concern of interest in preserving dark skies. We arranged to meet with Center Stage, and they very graciously hosted a community meeting. Sadly, only seven people from the public showed up to represent the community interests. And Center Stage was very gracious in responding to the criticisms, and as they've repeated today, willing to accommodate in the interest of being a good neighbor. I'm personally an art patron myself. I'm a founding member of the Gold Canyon Arts Council. And our art community welcomes the presence of the productions by Center Stage. However, we also put out last week a survey asking the community, what are their concerns about this new signage issue? Some 100 people responded. Seventy-five percent of them said, "We're absolutely opposed." Nonetheless, I spoke yesterday with the representative, Ms. Schaefer of Center Stage, and again, she illustrated good faith effort in trying to respond to the wishes of the community. I think what's happening is that we have heard here at this podium, county personnel refer to dark skies. I think there's a common misunderstanding in the community that we respect dark skies despite the fact that we understand formally there is no dark sky ordinance, but there is a lighting standards ordinance. So, I think that resolution of this issue can be achieved by tabling or continuing a decision, because I would not like to see Center Stage denied the opportunity of adequate but conforming signage in the community. If you tabled or continue this topic and allow the county to produce standards which apparently don't exist or are under study. And incidentally, I have a hard time hearing the representative of the development office, because he seems to present in a conversational tone. And I think the volume needs to be turned up, because, Mr. Chairman, you respond in comparable conversational tone, and I moved up a row to try to hear a little bit better. So, that's my recommendation, that we conduct the business in a tone that everybody can hear, but most importantly pertinent to the issue right now. Continue or table until we have clarification, so that we won't have a repeat every time one of the new businesses. And we're welcoming new services to our community. But we'd hate for them to have to come in and again, reschedule to readjust to a different set of circumstances. Set the standards so that everybody will know what they are, and so there won't be a huge expenditure of $50,000, for example, that Center Stage has invested in this sign. So, that's my recommendation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any others who wish to address the board, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Lori Loomis again, and I am speaking about the sign. I have a couple of suggestions. One of the things I don't appreciate about having the sign in the location that they want to put it is, if you were to bring up the sign picture again, if you'll notice right above the sign is the mountain. And that right away is just detracting from the beauty that we're supposed to be seeing, which is why we all moved to Gold Canyon, is to appreciate the mountain when you're going to be having a flashing sign. As we all know, our children are very easily involved in electronics, and we want them to be swayed from looking at tablets and electronics all of the time. And now, as adults driving, we're going to be having a flashing sign with messages that as driving, we will be having electronics that we're supposed to be reading while we're driving. And to me, that's a contrary message that we are sending to ourselves as adults driving. It is just an accident waiting to happen. I just, I'm just opposed to it, and completely, because it takes away from the nature aspect of it. I just have to turn onto Sleepy Hollow Road, and I've actually missed my turn just because I'm staring at the mountain, just because of the beauty that you're supposed to be enjoying. You know, you're just following the road, but with that sign right there, it's going to be a problem. I don't see what's wrong with having a stationary sign. If they want to have that lit sign, why don't they move it out onto Highway 60, where they're going to get more people to look at it? What's wrong with that? They will definitely have more people see it out on Highway 60. I don't see what the problem is with that. That would be a solution. But to have it right in town is going to cause a problem. That would be my only suggestion. And then, for the sign ordinance, flank it off, frame it off so that it's the right size. Put it so that it's within its boundaries, so that it fits the square footage. That's the only suggestions that I could come up with. But we need to, you know, follow what's in place, instead of trying to have to create new guidelines to follow every time. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. All right, any others?
I can answer one of those. There, every sign ordinance, you cannot have a remote sign that's not attached, not associated with your business.
You can't have off-site signing.
Off-site, yeah, because we had restaurants that were out. And what if we put a sign here for a restaurant way over there? It just cannot work that way. It has to be at the location of the business.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor.
Miller.
Miller, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the, what was the legal square footage for this location? It's too big, it's too little, it's, what is it?
24 square feet.
Total?
Yeah.
So, 12 square feet each side?
Each side, right.
Three by four, pretty small.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Can I, yeah, I do have one more.
I guess so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that based off of linear footage along King's Ranch Road? What do you use for the formula to determine this property's legal sign square footage availability?
Bringing that up now, but I believe in that particular zoning district, and that might be the issue, is that it's zoned multifamily. It's actually a residential zoning category. It's a flat requirement, like it's, it's, there's no street computation. It's basically, this is how much you get. Let me double-check that.
So, residential zoning will not allow anything larger than, you're saying, 24 feet?
Mm-hmm.
A challenge in itself.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Any others from the public? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on this item, please. Actually, first I would close the public hearing. Thank you so much. Close the public hearing. And then now, I would ask for, for Mr. Abraham to talk again.
Thank you, I was just to jump in here. So, just some minor procedural maintenance here. The stipulations that we're talking about are, and I'm going to go ahead and read them into the record to make it a little bit cleaner for modification. Stipulation number one would be the sign's minimum display time shall not change more than once every eight seconds to the illumination levels. Electronic message displays shall incorporate photocell slash light sensors with automatic dimming technology to adjust display brightness in accordance with ambient light conditions. Displays shall have a brightness level of no greater than .3-foot candles above ambient light conditions at any property line. Three, maintenance, any allowed electronic message display that malfunctions or is damaged shall be repaired or disconnected within 24 hours by the owner or operator of the sign. And four, the sign shall be deactivated between the hours 11:00 PM through 7:00 AM Mountain Standard Time. Okay. Any additional questions, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board?
I.
Mr. Chairman?
Let's see, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And fourth, just for clarification, what I've heard from Mr. Abraham is that, number one, reader boards are not allowed anywhere in the county. And number two, this is more than double the allowed square footage. Am I correct in those understandings, Mr. Abraham?
You are.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Surti?
I hate making motions.
Then I do, yes.
If someone makes the motion, they can change it. I mean, it doesn't have to be written in the stipulation. Can it just be verbal?
Mr. Keller.
That will depend on what it is.
For instance, eight seconds to 12 seconds and off by nine o'clock.
That would need to be a change to the stipulation verbally. Verbally can be done.
Okay.
Would you care to make a motion? You don't want to do that, okay? May I ask for a motion, please, on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the motion would be to approve the sign with the new stipulations of rotation of the message 12 seconds and the, and the hours to be reduced to 10 o'clock? Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock? For approval with those new stipulations.
Can we talk in between motions?
We'll have a motion and.
We need a second.
Yeah, nine o'clock. I mean, in the summertime, it wouldn't even be dark. It would just, it gets dark about nine o'clock, so.
Correct.
Yes.
So, I have a motion and some comments. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes three, two. Oh, I'm sorry.
With the new stip.
With the, with the new stipulations, yes. Motion passes three, two, with the new stipulations. All right. Item number 10, and in this case, we're going to, we're going to have a, this, item 10, 11, and 12 will be discussed together, and we will have Sangita Deuker. You are up, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Sangita Deuker presenting the following three cases. The first is a pad amendment. The second one is a rezone. And the third one is a new pad overlay. The first one.
Everyone else has left the call.
Well, thank you.
To begin with, the first one is a pad amendment, PZPD dash 013 dash 22. This is, let me just, the Sunland Estates pad amendment. The proposal is requesting to remove 718 acres from the original 920 acres of Sunland Estates Planned Area Development Overlay District. This pad was approved in the year 2000 under PZPD 05200. As mentioned, the total acreage is 718. The location is along west of South Lamb Road, south of West Aldorf Road, and north of the city of Eloy. Owner applicant Avra Plantation Inc., EMN70 Roth IRA LLC, DKM Family Trust. Danielle Bingham is the applicant representing all of the owners, and the agent is Rose Law Group. Jordan Rose is the representative. The county map showing the location, one can see that it is in the southern portion, central of the county, and you can see that it's in the Arizona City area, north of Eloy, city of Eloy. The area map showing these two parcels, this part of two parcels, showing in red, and it's private land, and showing the surrounding zoning for this. Southern portion of these two parcels is the city of Eloy. It is abutted by the state land on the western portion. There's residential development on the north and the east portion of these parcels. The comprehensive plan for this has already been green energy production that was approved last year as part of the Arizona City Solar, which would be the following cases. This comprehensive plan, you can also see that it encompasses the 718 acres is portion, I mean, those are two parcels that are involved in this. Existing zoning is RVP, which is recreational vehicle park zone, and the M-H zone, manufactured home zone. You can also see in this existing zoning, the portion of the Arizona City, the Stage Code Road, the corner of Milligan and Lamb Road already being developed. The northern portion, again, GR, state land on the western side. Eastern portion along Lamb Road is pretty much developed. Southern portion is the city of Eloy. Aerial showing largely undeveloped land at this point in time. So, this is the Sunland Estates, the original acreage for this was 920 acres, which was the total pad area. And the red portion, which is showing, is the portion that needs to be removed. It says divorcing off of the original pad. So, what would remain is on the right-hand side of this, of this map showing the remnant 203 acres of the original pad. So what would remain is on the right-hand side of this, of this map showing the remnant two-hundred-and-three acres of the original pad. Sunland Estates project details. This area that is requesting for, to be removed is going to be part of the Arizona City Solar project, and details of which would follow in the next two cases that I would be presenting again. This is the original development plan of the Sunland Estates that was approved in two thousand. And one can see it is what was largely a bubble diagram. And the portion of number one in the northeast corner of this has already been developed along Milligan and Lamb Road. And the red dotted line is showing the portions that are requested for removal from this original Sunland Estates pad. So what happens is the land use for existing table, which was for nine-hundred-and-twenty acres, for number of units is three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven units, is now reduced to two-hundred-and-three acres with seven-hundred units. However, there's no change in the development standards. The two-hundred-and-three acres would still follow all development standards as per the original pad. Some pictures taken along north of this, one can see that's along Lamb Road. And western portion is the parcels involved. South, pictures along south. Along east opposite, one can see development already happened, houses being built. And west into the property, which is the Sunland Estates, it's not developed at all. Issues for both considerations. Total area is being reduced from nine-twenty to two-hundred acres for the development of the Arizona City Solar project. That's going to be part of that project. All stipulations, one to fifteen of the original case, would be valid for the remaining two-hundred-and-three acres. Site plan submitted for the remainder pad, which is the two-hundred-and-three acres, would trigger a minor pad amendment request to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Director. We received no, no letters of opposition, and Planning and Zoning approved this with the four stipulations as shared with you in the staff report. I would request Natasha to move forward with the next case because we're going to see all the three cases together. So the next case is going to be the rezone case for the Arizona City Solar. So these, this case is a rezone from the existing MH and RVP zone two, the I-three zoning, which is the first case. The proposal is requesting one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven acres from General Rural Zoning District, RVP, and Manufactured Home to I-three to allow for development standards for a solar energy facility with battery energy storage. The pad overlay also is requesting the approval for the same area, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven acres, for development of the solar power plant. Location is, again, along the same area. Subject site is west along South Lamb Road, south of west Aldorf Road, north of the city of Eloy, approximately six-point-five miles west of I-ten on the outskirts of Arizona City. Same applicants and agents for this project, too. The county map, again, showing the same location for this solar project. The vicinity map now shows the earlier two parcels that are now part of this Arizona City Solar. And you can see it adds further, more parcels to the north and south of the Sunland Estates. Similar zoning showing GR, state land to the west, south is city of Eloy. Development happened already along north of Aldorf Road and along the east of the Lamb Road. Aerial map showing all of the parcels for this project, totally undeveloped and, at this point, just development on the north and east portion. Area map, again, showing the same areas with additional areas added to this Arizona City Solar in addition to the two parcels that are going to be requested for divorce from the Sunland Estates, and also parcels to the south, which abut the city of Eloy. Comprehensive plan, which was approved as green energy production, was for this whole area. That also included those two parcels that are requested for divorce. The current zoning is GR, Manufactured Home, and RVP, and showing, the maps showing those colors. Proposed zoning is I-three with a pad overlay. Development standards for I-three, minimum lot area is none. Building setbacks, front is twenty feet, side is zero, twenty-five abutting residential and rural, ten feet, twenty-five feet debuting residential or rural. So minimum is ninety feet is proposed, as per proposed pad. The maximum building height is fifty feet. And as per I-three zoning, there's no change in the proposed pad for development standards. This is the site plan overall, showing how the, the solar panels are going to be laid out. And in my further slides, I will show you some of the circulation, access and trails. So the red dots show the entry points into the site along Milligan Road and along the Lamb Road. So the red dots then take you to the internal roads that are being shown in red where the panels have been laid out. One can see that the access roads are two access. One is along the Lamb Road, and one is centrally in the project along the Milligan Road where you enter into and, again, have the internal circulation. The trails, as shown in green dotted line, is along the Aldorf Road, on the northern portion of this project boundary, and along the east side on the Lamb Road, which is abutting the project portions. The green, sorry, the blue dotted lines shows the CMU wall locations. And that is along, again, the development that has already happened along the Aldorf Road, along the east portion of the Lamb Road, and the east portion of the project area boundary. So some subject site details. This project is going to be two-hundred-and-seventy-five megawatt full of PV solar energy facility with battery storage on that sixteen-seventy-seven acres. Project area is crossed by two existing transmission lines, one-hundred-and-fifteen KB and two-hundred-and-twenty KB to connect to the regional grid. The applicant has taken advantage of that, which is good, they don't have to build new. Transmission lines, substations is located centrally along the project side. Trails will be developed along the west Aldorf Road and along South Lamb Road to connect to the regional trails planned at the county level for Penal County Open Space and Trails Design Manual. And this is a map that shows the existing proposed space. And there were two trails that were crossing or along the western edge of this project proposals. There is an adopted county trail corridor and a proposed multi-use trail corridor, which has been incorporated by the applicant. And that is the site section, which shows the trail that has, or that would be developed by the applicant and then dedicated to the county. It shows the setbacks of one-hundred-and-fifty feet. And you can see that there is a setback. There's a CMU wall, the landscape buffer, there's a further ten-feet buffer, and then you have the trail that would be developed, which has a two-feet shoulder on each side of the trail. And then there is a setback from the road that clearly shows the distance from the solar panels. The image below kind of shows the, it kind of is rendering, showing the distance to the panels. That would not be trying to cover it and have a buffering space. The site plan section, again, sharing with you in this is the landscape, some of the standards that would be, that the applicant would be developing for, this is a three-hundred-feet kind of a section showing trees, shrubs and cacti that would be developed by the applicant for, again, ensuring visual barrier landscaping to see that the property owners on the eastern portion of the boundary and along the north are kind of having that visual barrier and not being directly seeing those panels. Trail sections further showing that we, the applicant has agreed to ninety-five percent subsoil compaction for this trail as directed by the Open Space and Trails Director. Again, pictures along north of this, of this project site, along Lamb Road. This is south into the property. East opposite, showing development already happened. And west into this property where the portions of the Sunland Estates are going to be part of the Arizona City Solar. Items for both considerations. The subject site is already designated as green energy production and conforms to the current comprehensive plan. Staff has forwarded a recommendation of approval for both applications. And proposed rezoning and pad will have little to impact or less impact to the area with the buffering that has been shown. And also applicant agreeing to all of the stipulations as mentioned, which were approved by the PNZ. Solar projects usually use less water as compared to other agricultural uses. And applicant has provided also a decommissioning plan. And it provides us financial assurance and direction on how to decommission the solar project once no longer in, no longer functional. We received no responses, no letters of opposition. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on both the cases with one stipulation for the rezone to I-three and twenty-four stipulations for the pad overlay. And I'm ready for any questions, or we can request the applicant if you do not have. They have a presentation to present to the board.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'd ask the presenter, or the applicant to come.
Thank you.
Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Chair McClure and Vice Chair Surti, members of the board. For your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. And with me today is my senior project manager, Jennifer Hall, Sam Demoss in my office, and Logan Stevens, the senior director at Pine Gate, the client. So first of all, thank you to staff and to you for working with us for, gosh, over two years now on this project. This project was in the chairman's district and is now in Supervisor Miller's district. And so we've had lots of input, and we appreciate all the support we've had. Let me just run through kind of the, I, I have a couple stipulations that we'd like to make modifications to. And let me explain the circumstance by which I feel that this is appropriate. I know over the last, I don't know, couple decades, I've come and we've changed stipulations at the Board of Supervisors when it is important to the project and when it's appropriate. And I, I feel like in this case, that's certainly the same situation. We submitted this rezoning request back in October of last year. And so it's almost taken a year to get to you. And that timeframe is, is certainly long, but fine. But we certainly don't want to see any more delay because they promised this project to utilities at a certain price and at a certain timeframe. So we'd love to be able to move forward with an approval. We received staff comments on the, or staff stipulations the day before the Planning Commission hearing. Okay? And as soon as we received those, we reviewed those stipulations. And within a few hours, we redlined those and got them back to staff for, for their, you know, consideration prior to the next day when this went to Planning Commission. And a couple of these stipulations are what I want to talk to you about. With the Planning Commission, then, when we got up and presented, there was another person from my office that presented at Planning Commission. He asked for some changes, and the changes were not discussed very widely. So the commission chair just said, hey, you know, that's not of interest to us. And then my guy from my firm went back to the client and said, is that okay for now? And they must have had some conversation, it was a different senior director. And he said, fine. So they went and approved the stipulations. Subsequent to that, the client went and looked at the project and the cost of some of these stipulations that we had already asked to change and found that they are really expensive. So let me just show you this really quick. The first modification, I don't think should be a problem, right? Or potentially, your staff can clarify that this is okay. But right now, our site plan shows a trail. And we're like the only solar project that I know that's building out three miles of county trail, which I think is great, but that is what we're doing. It shows a trail, and the trail is kind of close to our CMU block wall. We're building two-and-a-half miles of block wall. Again, maybe the only one, I, I don't know, but that's a lot of mall. But anyhow, the trail's pretty close to it. We want the ability to potentially move the trail closer to the road so that it's more accessible to the public. And I just want to make sure the language allows for that when this, when this staff looks at the site plan. So we'll just need clarification on that. But we were thinking maybe just change it to general conformance. The other stipulations, seven and eight, we believe need to be deleted. They mentioned that we should plant native seed in the air, in the area that's, from the, from the property line to the wall. We have agreed to actually fully landscape two-point-five miles of this property. And that is the two-point-five miles that's closest to any roadways or anything. The rest of the property that would have the seed would be six-hundred acres, and it's not adjacent to anything. There's no water out there. We're already doing a six-foot block wall. I'm not sure who we're trying to put the seed in for. And we have a thirty-foot trail to screen the street views. And in addition, we got the, the six-hundred acres of landscape, of reseeding priced out, and it's two-point-one million dollars. So this client has already promised, you know, a bid to a utility. And the two-point-one million dollars for seeds, basically, I don't know who's looking at them, would not be in that. And this also, this stipulation, number fifteen, just clarifies the landscape buffer. So these are the four stipulation requests. But let me just show you a quick demonstration of what I'm talking about so it makes a little bit more sense visually. So there's only two roadways, Lamb and Alsdorf, okay? The rest of it, there are no roadways. The others are future alignments, and we're providing the right-of-way. In fact, we're providing forty-six acres, we're buying forty-six acres of right-of-way, so it's expensive. The panels are set back already one-hundred-and-fifty feet from Alsdorf and Lamb. We agreed to that, and we worked really hard with your staff on that. And then they're being set back one-hundred-and-twenty feet on every other boundary. You can see here, there's going to be a six-foot block wall there. And then that will also be landscaped, and we've agreed to that. And so then, we've also agreed to this thirty-foot wide trail corridor we're going to improve for, or we're going to dedicate for the public enjoyment. And so if you look at what is out there now, and unfortunately, I don't think I have a great picture. There's, this is not, like, in some solar cases, not any that we did, you did apparently, I've not seen this, but require reseeding. But that was where there was like some sort of Sonoran desert. This is really brush, and it's bordered by state land. And I don't know why we're reseeding bordering a state land piece, and when no neighbors are asking us for that. So in this particular case, I, I would just ask that you, that you make these modifications to the stipulations. I think it's appropriate. It doesn't set any kind of precedent. And frankly, that's, I think, what your job is. I think the only other thing you, you know, you could potentially consider is sending us back to Planning Commission. But, but this, we got the stipulation the day before. We asked for it, and that would just be a delay that doesn't make much sense when this has almost taken a year to get to you on a great project that just needs to go forward. And no one's asking for this. We have no constituency asking for seeding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, let's see. So this is a public hearing, and I would, at this time, open the public hearing for items ten, eleven and twelve. Are there any folks from the public that care to speak to these items? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask the board if they have any questions. Supervisor Miller?
Yes, thank you.
You didn't even ask.
You could see it in my.
You could see it in my eyes. Well, I am concerned about the, I think the stipulations or the modification of the stipulations is reasonable. It looks like a lot of, you know, spent money for CMU walls and landscaping and seeding and all those types of things. I guess my concern is that, did the, you know, how did that transpire, you know, how did it get this far and not have the blessings of the Planning and Zoning Commission? Is maybe a concern, but the stipulations are, to me, reasonable and appropriate in this case, but I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel about that, so.
Chair and supervisor, if you, if you, if I may, I think we had discussed that CMU wall and landscaping over the last year and a half with staff and we, and the trail, and we agreed to that. So that was over and above, I think, what a lot of cases have done. And so when we saw that stipulation about reseeding, we were, we were kind of taken aback because we had not talked about that. And also there's, in this case, and I get why some cases that might be applicable, but like if you drive out there, there's nothing to reseed. I mean, we would be improving it, but we can't keep the plants alive anyhow, but we would be improving what's there right now. So I just think that's what happened and there wasn't much discussion at P&amp;Z. And so it's, it's like, like anything, sometimes things are not necessarily, you know, looked at really, really carefully at the Planning Commission or, you know, the conversation's not robust, so. I don't think there would be any reason to believe that, that there's, there's no constituency for reseeding. So I'm not sure that like we go back and there's some added benefit to them talking about what makes sense. This is really a policy decision. Do you want to have people spending money on reseeding? I don't know that it's a Planning Commission decision about that, so.
Yeah, and to the, to that point, I don't remember everything we, I voted on over the years, but I don't remember anybody being requested to seed. I've seen the block walls at times and they're very expensive. And I guess the purpose is so you can't see the solar panels? I can only assume that's the reason you're.
Over to this one.
And Chair and Supervisor, just to be clear, we're not disagreeing. We're gonna do the CMU wall. We're doing the wall, yes.
Trying to get a feel for what we're doing here.
Yeah. And we're do, and by the way, on the part that we're asking not to seed, we're doing a fence, so there's no, we're, yeah.
I mean, I see the disturbance of the desert and I understand that desert landscaping, if you disturb it, it doesn't like to come back quickly. But I see where your chain link fence is on the western side and you will be disturbing the ground and I see some, some reason to go back and see that to cause it to grow back. I see some of that.
Chair and members of the board, we don't mind in any way replanting anything that is disturbed, but this is an over and above. This is saying to seed the surrounding area and that, you know, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not trying to change what's out there if we disturb something, but we, we don't think this over and above. And literally, there's, we're bordered by state land and to put out 600 acres of seed, I mean, they, they went back and got bids and it's $2.1 million to put the seed out. That's not the block wall and the landscaping, that's already factored into the price of power, but this 2.1, I mean, that's a lot of money for power price.
Supervisor Sertie?
So yeah, I totally agree with the wall screening it, but I want to give an example of something that City of Apache Junction, when we renewed the Republic Services to do the landfill, we required them to do desert landscaping on their way in and they planted palaverdies and mesquite, which will grow here, but there was absolutely, there's no water there. Every one of them died and it was very sad to see them put the effort into putting these trees there. So they'd have to be watered with water trucks in the meantime and then they might survive. So with there being no irrigation there, I don't see that we should really force them to, to seed it for something that may all die. They may spend all that money and have it not even take.
Supervisor Goodman, do you have a comment?
No.
No comment?
No, I'm good, let's move on.
I'm, my, my personal feeling on this is that these stipulations have been agreed to in the past and we're not going to go against planning and zoning. And I think that if you want to change stipulations, that you need to go back to planning and zoning and work on it.
Chair and Vice Chair, I would, I appreciate that and just, we, we got this stipulation the day before and we had a very short conversation where it was just shut down by P&amp;Z. There wasn't, I mean, literally, the chairman just said, we're not going to talk about that. And I'm putting words, I wasn't sitting there, but that's my understanding. And so I don't, there's, there's literally no constituency for this seeding and it, and there is no water in that area to keep it alive. The, the power costs would just be astronomical to bring water there and the landscaper or the landscape company said that it would need to have some sort of watering. So we are doing that on the two and a half miles. So I, I understand going back, but it's just spending time to make a policy decision on should, you know, a power producing, you know, use that's not abutting anything have to do this, you know, seeding. So I just ask, if possible, to be able to make those adjustments today.
Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whose idea was it to seed? Was it staff or was it the Planning and Zoning Commission?
It was staff.
It was staff. Okay.
All right, so any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion.
Chairman.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, do I, I'm sorry. Staff. Please.
I would like to kind of conclude, couple of things that the applicant is requesting for. And just to give you an overview of a couple of things. First of all, the comprehensive plan was approved based on ensuring that buffers are taken care of, which the applicant has. The, I'll go specific per stipulation modifications. The trail locations is what the applicant is requesting to be able to be in general conformance with. I would like to let the board know that this goes through a process of a site plan where we go through the details and that involves of finer adjustments and that would happen if it is required and it, there is a change in the exact location of trails. So that is a process after the rezoning and this pad overlay has been approved.
That's the issue, is the date. That's the only issue, that's stipulated to that date.
Right, but anyways, it just goes through a site plan process, which, you know, shouldn't be a problem. The reseeding, you know, that we have been discussing has been, this is not the first time that we are asking. We have approved, the board has approved Cheerion Solar, that has adopted the whole process and the, the idea and the ad, the issue of disturbed areas. So just to give that as a perspective, the last one was, the one-fourth mile is not developed now in the presentation as the applicant showed. However, we look for planning across next 20 years, 30 years, when after this is done, there is expected residential development for manufactured homes, which is just abutting that. And that's our request, that, that would be followed all along the edge of the residential development. To, to just kind of clarify to more aspects, I think the parcels are part of two districts, three and four. Just, and that was just an FYI. And just to conclude finally, you, the board has, you know, the options of either first accepting what the applicant or the staff has presented, the second is modifications. If the board decides to move forward with remanding, I would request that all three cases would be remanded back to P&amp;Z because all of these are tied together and that is just in case if the board decides to. That is my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair and board members, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear, we're showing what we're doing here. I mean, we're talking about the areas that are on the periphery of state land. We're talking about areas that are internal to the site. I mean, we're landscaping and CMU block walling, everything that's visible from anybody in the area. So I know that, you know, in the past, you've, you've made changes to planning commission actions, but in this case, it wasn't the Planning Commission that felt strongly about this. In fact, we hadn't even had a conversation with anybody about this seeding thing until we saw it on a step. So I don't even feel like it was a big deal to staff at that time. The big deal was that we build a whole trail system for the county, or that we reserve the trail and we do the walls and landscaping. So, so in any case, we want to go forward now with those revised steps. Certainly, we don't want to be rejected because that would be a disaster for the whole project, but we appreciate you using your best judgment.
Any other comments from staff or presenter? Okay, I would ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
I move that we approve the item as presented with removal of the stipulation for the overseeding.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Which, which case? Because there are three separate cases.
I'm sorry, do we have to pull them all at once or do, because we can't vote on them all at once, can't we? We have to pull each one? Okay, Supervisor Kavanaugh, can you please restate your motion?
So, and I just lost my screen.
We, we have item 10, 11, and 12. We, we have to vote on them separately and make motions separately.
Right, I believe I was looking at item number 10. I would move that we approve it as presented with the exception of the removal of the stipulation for seeding.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Alan Quist with the County Attorney's Office. The stipulations that are at issue, is my understanding, with the applicant are in item number 12.
That's, that's where the seeding is.
That is where the seeding relate, is located. There's actually two stipulations there. I've prepared some proposed motion language when we get to those items. If the board is inclined to go with the modifications as proposed by the applicant, there is a proposed motion for, language for that that I can provide. Also, I, I'd recommend that we read the modified language into the record. So there's two deletions they're proposing and two modifications. So we read that into the record, that would help facilitate the motion process if the board is inclined to, to adopt those modifications.
And that is if, okay.
And that's on item number 12, correct?
12, yes.
Okay.
So Supervisor Kavanaugh, can you please restate your motion for 10?
Well, first, yeah, I will withdraw my motion with respect to the stipulations on 10. And I believe we would want to approve item 10 as presented. And if, if I am incorrect in that, perhaps Supervisor Miller would want to make a friendly amendment.
Supervisor Miller?
So it'd be item 10 with the four stipulations that are, that are associated to item number 10. I, I would, I would second a motion that would actually be item number 10 as presented. Is that correct? Is that what you're thinking, Mr. Kavanaugh? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, I lost my computer screen. I'm trying to reboot now, but I believe that is, that is correct. I would approve as presented unless there was something another supervisor wanted to amend.
So I second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Motion passes for one. Item number 11. May I get a motion on item 11, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 as presented with one stipulation.
I'll second that.
Mr. Quist, do you have language for this?
On the third, once the board has finalized the second case, 11, I, we would like to read the language for 12 into the record.
Yeah, okay. We're on 11 right now.
We are on 11, but just checking to make sure that they're not going to come yelling at me for this. Okay, so I have, I believe I have a motion and a second on 11?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes for one. Item 12. May I get a motion, please? After Mr. Quist tells us what that motion may be.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the proposed modifications, we're getting them up on the screen here, just to read them into the record to facilitate the motion process. Applicant is proposing amendment stipulation three, which reads, "Arizona City Solar Project Planned Area Development, PAD, Overlay District, PZ-PD-044-21 shall be in general conformance with the site plan slash development plan dated June 8, 2022, along with the additional documentation in accordance with the applicable criteria set forth in Chapter 2.176 of the Pinau County Development Services Code." Applicant is further requesting deletion in their entirety of stipulation seven and eight and modified language as to stipulation 15, applicant to provide six-foot CMU masonry wall along the Arizona City Solar Project Boundary that abuts the remaining Sunland Estate pad. And if the board would like assistance with crafting a motion, I can certainly provide that.
I would.
Supervisor Miller would like assistance.
His son, Mr. Ring.
On the screen, supervisors, you'll see the applicant recommendation, some proposed language there, but obviously, there's different permutations. It could be adopted in their, the entirety of what they're asking or a portion of it and that would modify the language depending on what, what the board desires to do.
May I get a motion on item 12?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 12 as modified by legal counsel.
Second.
Is that adequate? Mr. Attorney?
Supervisor Miller, I'd recommend reading into the motion language as presented.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, also, just for clarification purposes, because this is the item that Supervisor Kavanaugh was originally making a motion on and he had reference to deleting any reference to the seeding component of that. And I don't necessarily see that up there if that is what the board wants to consider.
And did Mr. Kavanaugh withdraw his motion? I do believe he did, right?
Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you withdraw your motion for item 12?
I withdrew my, my motion for item 10 we were on because it was incorrect.
And supervisors, stipulation seven and eight relate specifically to the seeding. So those are the deletions and then three and then new 13, which is currently 15, are the ones that just have the modified language.
It's clear as mud.
Okay, so somewhere in there, can I get a motion, please, for item number 12?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We'll get started here. On planning zoning case, PZ-PD-044-21, a planned area development with 24 stipulations as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, except that stipulation seven and eight shall be deleted with the remaining stipulations to be remanded in sequential order and, and renumbered stipulation three and 13, which was formerly stipulation 15, shall be modified as read into the record.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay. All right, thank you. Motion passes for one. Item 13, public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval on the new right-of-way license agreement between Penile County and Flock Group Incorporated. Presenter is Megan.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Keller.
Just, I wanted to make you aware because you had previously scheduled your press conference for 1 o'clock, and I did have an opportunity to check with the presenters on the next coming items, except for Supervisor Kavanaugh's item number 18. And everyone was okay if you want to continue those items to next week's meeting on the 10th, because that one is going to be changed to a special meeting anyway to take care of some action items. So, I just wanted to give you the opportunity in case you wanted to jump, or you wanted to call a recess and then come back and address these items after your press conference.
13, 14, 15, 16, 17, is that where we are?
Yes.
We could recess and come back?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to get them out of the way if we can today.
Yeah.
So, let's.
Rescess would be fine.
Let's do it. I move that we recess until after the press conference. License agreement. Ms. Villegas.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Megan Villegas with Public Works. I'm going to be presenting item 13 and 14. 13, I have on telephone Jesse Mudd from Flock and Sheriff Lamb with PCSO. This is a right-of-way license agreement between Penile County and Flock. It's a project that PCSO and Flock is putting on, and they asked to use our right-of-way. So, this is a right-of-way license to grant them the use of our right-of-way for cameras.
Okay.
Cameras, yes.
Because right-of-way, everybody looks and says, "Right-of-way, oh, it's the right-of-way on the side of the road." So, just to be clear, what right-of-way is?
Yes.
Everyone else has left the car.
They want to install their cameras in our right-of-way.
Do you want me to talk about what they are?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, these cameras are license plate readers, LPRs. We are testing out cameras that are produced by this company, Flock. They're being strategically placed in areas. What it allows us to do is, look, I'm a big constitutional guy, I don't want to impede on anybody's rights, but this also gives us the ability, if there's a break-in, a series of break-ins in a neighborhood, we are able to go back through and pull the vehicles that entered that neighborhood or were in that area. If you have a homicide, you can, and they say, "Look, it was a silver sedan," we can then go back in and look on those cameras to see what silver sedans and what the license plate was. It just gives us greater ability to, to be in neighborhoods where we can't, where we don't have enough deputies to be. That's the purpose of this, is to help reduce crime, help solve crimes when there is crimes. And this is an opportunity we will have, I think it's a year, I don't know if Jesse's back on the line, it's a year, and then we have to make the determination whether or not it's of great enough value for the sheriff's office in the county to continue moving forward, paying for it.
Supervisor Sertie.
So, City of Apache Junction put these in, they get some kind of a grant for them, and lots of speculating, why are you recording every vehicle in the whole city with no, with no reason? So, is there, after a week, does it get purged, or does it get cataloged somewhere, or does it go somewhere into the cloud? So, I think that would put people at ease if they know that they're not being recorded forever.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sertie, that is correct. There is a timeframe, and it's 30 days. You, after 30 days, if you haven't pulled that picture of a vehicle that you're looking for, all of it is purged within 30 days. The City of Apache Junction currently has the cameras in place, Casa Grande has the, the cameras currently in place. We are now going to be placing, I believe it's 20, maybe 25, I think it's 20 cameras in the county areas, which are going to be primarily Sandton Valley and Arizona City.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Or for Ms. Villegas? All right, this is a, do we have a?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Public hearing aspect, and so I'd open up the public hearing. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I would.
Wait, our county attorney would like to speak.
Oh, you, oh, you want to talk?
She was going to have to talk on this topic. No, I didn't want to address the public hearing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
As a citizen?
As a citizen. Well, yeah, I mean, Ken Volkmer, Penile County Attorney, I live in Casa Grande. I do really want to talk very quickly about Flock. About a year, year and a half ago, we used some of our RICO funds to partner with the City of Maricopa to create a pilot program using these Flock cameras. What was happening is the city was seeing some localized crime happening in a particular community. It was happening late at night, they were trying to redeploy their resources, but they didn't have a lot of officers in vehicles that they could just sit in particular neighborhoods. So, we essentially created a pilot program, and we put these cameras up. What I can tell you is the results were quite astounding. Obviously, we reduced the crime there. It also helped solve a murder. They were able to identify a vehicle fleeing from a shooting, they were able to see that person's, the make and model of the vehicle, the license plate, everything else, they were able to get it in immediately. It saved a couple people's lives. What had happened is, on two different occasions, people had actually called the police saying, "Hey, I can't get a hold of my daughter, her boyfriend just broke up with her, she's saying she's going to hurt herself." And they were actually able to use the Flock cameras to see where she was at, the direction she was going. Law enforcement was able to actually intercept and give her assistance and then give her help. Two different times, they were able to actually save somebody's life using it. So, this Flock system isn't just a Big Brother program where it's, we're trying to see everything that everybody's doing. It also has very strict limits on it. You can't just randomly look in there. You can't say, "Hey, I want to see, I think my wife might be having an affair, I want to see where she's going at 2:00 PM." Like, that's not an appropriate use. You have to validate why you're using it, and then it gets shared across the entire Flock group. So, you've got the entire West Valley that currently uses Flock, we've got the City of Maricopa, and then you earlier today just approved a, about a $70,000 RICO request of mine, where I'm giving additional six to the City of Casa Grande, I believe they're purchasing their own 14. The City of Florence, the City of Superior, and CAC are all also getting Flock cameras that we're providing, and the idea is, we're going to have a county-wide net. The idea is, our crime isn't located just in individual communities, and all of these information shares. So, if there's a vehicle, if there's a BOLO, if we know that somebody is involved in a drive-by shooting, it goes to all of these others. So, as the, one of the chief law enforcement officers in this county, I'm fully supportive of Flock. It is helpful for law enforcement, it saves people's lives, and it makes our community a better and safer place, and I would highly encourage this board to be supportive to the sheriff's request.
Thank you, Mr. Volkmer.
And Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, it also extends, we can actually collaborate with Mesa and a few of the other cities that are outside of the county that currently use the same systems. We can thus share that information as well. And just one more quick comment to Supervisor Sertie, we all know that in public, there is no expectation of privacy. There is no expectation of privacy. We're always, somebody always has the ability to watch us when we're in public. These cameras will not be pointed at anybody's residence, backyards, any of that stuff. These are primarily, this is just for monitoring the traffic, the vehicles coming in, and helping reduce crime and have a set of eyes where we can't always be like the county attorney had mentioned.
Thank you, Sheriff Lamb. Okay, we, are there any other questions from the board? Any questions from the, while we already opened and closed the public hearing? So, we're good. So, I think, I think we're fine. So, may I get a motion, please, for this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Hearing one. Motion passes for one. All right. Item 14. Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry, so, item 14.
I do have Christina here as a representative from Cactus State Utility Company for any questions on the agreement. Public Works is requesting the approval of the right-of-way franchise water agreement with Penile County and Cactus State Utility Operating Company.
Please come and present. Be present, present.
Hi, my name is Christina Jovanovic. On behalf of Cactus State, we are a utility operating company. We've purchased non-viable water systems as determined by the Arizona Corporation Commission and built them back, right? So, we make sure they meet compliance with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for Drinking Water Standards, do repairs over time, but mostly, we're not building anything new. Per our ACC decision back in December, we have to get all new rights-of-way franchise agreements with the different counties we operate in, because all of the franchise agreements that were covering these systems either expired, or you cannot transfer them to a new owner. So, pretty much, we have, Carter Water System is 11 customers, so we just want to cover whatever rights-of-way the previous owners built in, cover the pipelines that might be in the rights-of-way the previous owners built, and continue serving them water. Any questions?
Sounds like a simple thing to me. Any questions from the board?
Pretty standard.
Pretty standard, all right. So, all right, well, this is a, this has a public hearing aspect to it, and I would open the public hearing, and anyone from the public here to speak. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and are there any other questions from the board? For Ms. Villegas? For anybody? All right, in that case, I'd ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 14 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 15, public hearing and discussion, disapproval, approval of resolution Ms. Garza, how are you doing?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Celeste Garza, Assistant County Engineer with Public Works. I'm here to, for item 15, which is the abandonment of a portion of easement located on Colt Road in Vice Chairman Sertie's district, again. This is located in northern Apache Junction. It is within Section 4, so this is located west of Wolverine Pass and north of the Saddlebutte Street alignment. Mr. and Mrs. Frisk would like to prevent ATV traffic from crossing through their property that accesses the gold mines up there. Legal and physical access, as the code reads, nothing will be compromised. We do not maintain a road along this alignment. It's strictly used for private ingress egress. The petitioner has obtained 100% signatures of the surrounding properties, and the utilities are also in agreement. So, here's some photos. This is looking south down the Colt Road alignment, and this is looking east down from Winchester. That's all I could obtain, or where I could get to. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. All right, I would ask for a motion then.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, I guess I can't do that. Okay, fine, fine, I'll do the public hearing. Okay, so, we'll open the public hearing. So, anyone from the public here to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now, I'll ask, are there any other questions from the board? I'll follow the script, I promise. Okay, so, let's see. So, I, hearing no questions, I will ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 15 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item 16 is, what do we hear? Discussion, approval, disapproval of a memorandum of agreement between Penile County Board of Supervisors and the Brownfields Assessment Coalition. And I have Heather Patel, and I have Kathy Melvin of Hela County presenting.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Patel with the Office of Budget and Finance. This memorandum of agreement before you today is between the county and the Brownfields Assessment Coalition, which was a group of communities within the copper corridor between Hela and Penile Counties, and it is to perform certain tasks. Hela County is the primary applicant to the EPA for this program, and so Kathy Melvin is here to just talk a little bit about the program.
Thank you. Ms. Melvin, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. As Heather said, I'm Kathy Melvin, I'm with the Hela County Board of Supervisors, specifically with Hela County Supervisor, District 3, Woody Klein. We were approached back in 2019 with, from a group of folks that were doing some blight projects within the copper corridor. Superior was kind of the lead agency at that time, and they had just been denied an EPA Brownfields grant. So, they were told by EPA they would stand a better chance if they formed a coalition, because it's a bigger group of communities, you know, rather than just one small community. So, they approached Hela County staff at a meeting over in Winkleman and asked, sort of hinted that they needed somebody, a bigger set of pockets to help them out. So, we went back, I went back and asked the county manager and finance department, and obviously Supervisor Klein, if the county would be willing to represent this group. So, the copper corridor blight busters was formed that day, and we applied in 2019 for a grant of $600,000 as a coalition. We were denied. We only had about five weeks to put it together at that point. We were denied that year, we made a couple of changes, the next year, we applied in 2020 for 2021, and we were awarded. So, the coalition was off and running, and we were awarded last fall, and so we're just barely getting the project started now. Penile County did submit a letter in 2020 and in 2019, but this more formalizes the group, each one of us have to do a memorandum of agreement, which is a little more formal than the letter of support that you submitted in the beginning. The program, I go, you do, we have the slides, how do I move the slides forward? Do you do that for me?
I can.
You can? Okay. This is actually an example of our website that you see there. It explains what Brownfields grants are. This was part of the project, we had to develop a website so that the public can go and access the program and see how they can apply and what Brownfields means. So, there is a first slide there that talks about what are Brownfields. They're abandoned sites, typically, they're, they could be used as commercial properties. Right now, what we're focusing on is government-owned commercial properties. So, they could be like a government building that maybe you suspect has lead and asbestos in it, you're not using it, but you could apply for this money, and you could get the assessment one and assessment two to determine if you do have any environmental concerns and contaminations in those buildings, which helps you move on and get money later for either removal or demolition of the site. So, we'll go to the next one. This is the grant criteria to apply for the grants through this coalition. Those are the, on the side there tells you, explains to you a little bit more what the sites are, I mean, what the site needs to look like, or needs to have the criteria for it, how it's funded. As you can see off to the right, these assessments are pretty expensive. We applied for $600,000, the county's keeping back around $100,000 to administer the program, but then we've hired a contractor that will actually go out and do all of these assessments for us. We don't have that expertise on staff, and that's EPA recommended that we do that. So, that's how much the different assessments cost to do. One of the things we found out just in the last couple of weeks, which really concerns us a little bit, it makes it a little bit harder, is any property that was bought after 2002 needed to have part of the real estate transaction, it needed to have a phase-one assessment done. If it didn't have a phase-one done, it doesn't qualify under this grant, they have to go someplace else and do it, you know, get it, and go through the process, it takes a lot longer. So, we'd like to get as many buildings assessed through this grant that we can. Okay, the next one. This is an example of a site that we did, that Hela County did over in Hayden, and this was outside of this grant. This just gives you an idea of what you can do. This was fondly known as the Asbestos Motel, it was located right on 177, and as you can see, it was falling apart. When they'd have a storm, the materials would blow into the streets and, or into the road there on 177, and right down, it's right down from the school district, and so, city workers were going out there and cleaning up this, these materials, which they suspected had lead and asbestos. um, these materials, which they suspected had lead and asbestos, asbestos in them, and they did. So when we had the assessment done, that is what happened. Uh, we went through the Brownfields program here in the state, which is a really good program, we were able to get that torn down, cleaned up, removed, and then on the right, you can see that we had, um, some Ramada covers brought in and some picnic tables. So we turned it into a, a parking area there in Hayden, which they really needed off-road parking right there. So our, the county's total investment in that was $85,000, our total grant funds were around $66,000 for that, well, 66 and 51. Okay, next. Um, this was an, is an RV park in Hela County, it's right there on the overpass. This one, they just suspected there were, from, you know, historically, people talked about what was done at that site before, and they thought that there had been rumors that things, something had been dumped back there, I don't know if it was oil or gas or what it was, but for years, this lady tried to get this developed and she couldn't, so through a Brownfields assessment grant, they were able to go in there and assess the property and, and dig down and, and discover that there wasn't, there weren't any violations there at all, any contamination. So that came into an RV park, which is busy all the time, I think the park is typically full. So that's another example of what you can do in your community, you know, to bring back a little community development and, and help out a citizen. And next. This is another building just being considered, um, it's an old school, an old abandoned school, and I know you have quite a few of those in Pinellas County, um, so you can use these for apartments, beautification projects, you know, whatever. This is another school, um, our gentleman that I think all of us know, he likes to go around and buy up old buildings, and this is owned by him, um, and it's in the process right now of being developed, the city of Globe is working with a developer and that, they want to put in, uh, senior apartments there. So it's another good project that you can do in your community. Here's the steps to apply, and this is just for, uh, the public, like I said, this is just a page from our website, so this gives people the idea of how they can apply. We'll also be doing with our contractor, um, coming up real soon, we'll be doing public participation meetings, so the public can hear about these, the grant funds and how they can apply for them, and we'll put them on the list. We had to have a list developed when we applied for the grant, so we have quite a few properties, but as I said, we're finding out that, you know, we've got this little glitch, if it was purchased after 2002, they're going to have to go through more steps. So we're hoping we can figure out a way to work around that. There's the criteria again for who can apply, um, and again, that's just for our public, and that was just to give you an example of what our website looks like, that's a page from our website. And there's the steps, again, that's for the public, to let them know how they can apply, or cities and towns, as I said, we do have a list that we put together from all of the member entities, um, that they have, that we're working through that list right And that's it, that shows you how you can go in and you can apply digitally, somebody from our staff will be calling, um, Amy Staton is our grants coordinator for the county, and Amy and I are kind of running the project with a little bit of help from the communities. And shows you how to submit, and I think that's Builder Bob or somebody there, I think he's our logo guy there, Brownfields. And that's it, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
We appreciate you guys sitting through our long meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I heard that the administrative fee or county's portion of this is $100,000. Perhaps the question is for Heather Patel, is there a way we can reduce the amount that the county takes so that more money can effectively be used for, um, examining these Brownfield sites?
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, this is Heather Patel. Um, actually, the administrative dollars would be retained by Hela County, as they are the lead applicant with EPA, so the county is not receiving any administrative dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Pinellas County.
Pinellas County is not receiving, yes.
Sorry.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, the $100,000, I should have said, this is a three-year grant, so that a little over $100,000 will actually be spread over three years. So that pays for our coordinator, our grant coordinator's time, you know, probably a little bit of my time and travel and that kind of thing. So we may not spend all of that, but it is spread over a three-year period.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any comments, any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 16 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for what you do. Item 17, discussion approval, disapproval of the recommendation of the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control, application for a beer and wine store somewhere, uh, anyone here to? Natasha, you are the presenter.
Yes, Chairman, Chairman and, um, Board of Supervisors, this, um, item is a liquor license application, the building official is asking for a continuance to allow for the inspection, um, of that building once it has been finalized, and so the motion that I am requesting is that this item be continued until August the 24th agenda.
Okay, so, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item to August 24th of 2022's board meeting.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Item 18, discussion approval, disapproval to increase District One's fiscal year 2223 budget capacity by $18,082 for a total budget of $313,422. This has been continued from July 6, 2022, board meeting. Supervisor Kavanaugh, you are the presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this is an increase of $18,000 only over the base budget. So, um, right now, we are down to two employees, aside from myself, and we were waiting on the county management HR staff to evaluate, uh, the work of one particular employee and recommend a salary adjustment. With the election debacle, I'm, I'm sure it's been quite busy, and we haven't got that yet, so likely that we'll approve this and then, um, not need, depending on the circumstances, we may not need the, the increase, but we don't know, we don't know, so. Any questions?
Are there questions from the board?
Yeah.
Please, Supervisor Goodman.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could, Mary Ellen, he alluded that you were probably going to do some research or something, can you, uh, speak to that? And like he said, we've had, we've been inundated with some other pressing issues, and so, yeah, sort of.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Goodman?
On her own duck, huh?
Um, what Supervisor Kavanaugh was speaking to is, we asked each of the districts, we did an analysis based upon position description questionnaires to assess the work performed, and then, as you may recall, we made a recommendation as to the baseline staffing. In District One, based upon the completion of that questionnaire, it was evident that one, two of the staff at the time now, only one of the staff was acting, performing duties that were a higher level than the classification that he was in. So that analysis has been done, and the information was shared, it just hasn't received final approval. The recommendation, though, is consistent with the baseline staffing that was provided for all of the district offices, in that the position was appropriately rather than an administrative assistant, an administrative specialist.
So...
So, yes, go ahead.
Am I to understand that with your analysis and everything that you've performed, it falls within that base amount that each supervisor has been get, that, that we set as a base or whatever we set for, what?
The recommendation is consistent with the baseline, yes, that was provided to all. Now, in fairness, this was shared yesterday afternoon, I have not had an opportunity to speak with Supervisor Kavanaugh to get his input on it.
So, go ahead.
Do we want to continue this until next meeting?
There you go.
Which is next Wednesday?
I would defer that to Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you have an opinion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to postpone till next week.
Okay, I could do that. Um, all right, so, can I get a motion here, unless there's any other questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we postpone, oh, wait, that we...
Continue.
That we continue this, item number 18, until August 10th, which is next week, at our next board meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, I take the direction well.
You do great, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, continue till next week. Thank you. Item 19, uh, are there any items that any board member would care to have on a future agenda?
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah, I, you know, I will, this is probably a good opportunity for me to, to really stress and talk about the, the items that really took place yesterday during the election, and that we, we really have got to take ownership of this as a board, and really go forward and, and full-on, full press on all of this, to get this at the forefront and get this resolved. I know at the, your, your, your meeting yesterday, and, and get back to us as board members as soon as possible with a lot of the feedback, and I know we've got only two weeks to get these ballots in order, and so this is prob, this is, and I know you're, I'll let you go from there. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just getting right out in the gate on this one.
I would say by next week, we'd have quite a bit to report to you.
Good, okay.
So we could put that on the...
So, uh, so, Mr. Goodman, you asked that we just talk about election items somewhere in the future?
That is correct.
And I'm wondering if we don't maybe just have like a special meeting with nothing but that on the agenda, rather than, you know, try to squeeze it in, and almost have like a, like a hearing on everything, and have this all so the public can see every step of the way, all the questioning that we're doing. Staff, of course, would be, have a report from every staff member that comes up, but yeah, we've got to be completely transparent about this, and, uh, I, I don't know if that's precedent to have a meeting like that, or just to put it into a regular meeting, since we're all down here on that day.
We, we could have a special meeting, we could, we could have a, a work session on it, and, and have everybody come talk to us.
Since a work, a work session is a little more fluid, right?
A little more fluid, yes, so we could...
Mr. Miller wants to weigh in.
Yeah, if I, if I might, um, Mr. Chairman, next week, we get a report with more detail, and I see the 17th is open, but maybe we could convert that to a, a work session where we do some forensic understanding of the process and everything that happened, uh, yesterday, and the days leading up to it, actually. Uh, so, but next week, give us more detail about, you know, what we know, and then, on the 17th, if we could just dive into just that topic, uh, in open session.
I think by that time, we'd probably have a lot more information and be able to have a good work session on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that work, Natasha?
Yeah, I like that.
That's a suggestion.
Okay, no, because we have things to get in place between now and then.
Yeah, yeah.
And, well, once we have moving, then we can report, and have a real, real talk.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, are there any other items that any other board members would care to have on the agenda? Hearing none, we will do what we talked about, in that case, we're adjourned.